Let's go. Let's call this meeting order. This is our Ware County Board of Commission Work Session on Monday, May the 12th, 3:30. And before we start, I've asked Mr. Burse if he would to lead us in a prayer.
Okay, when we get started.
My name is Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. I ask, Lord, that you will bless us as we deliberate the business of this county. We pray, God, you give us the right decision to make, oh God, and, Lord, remove all personal feelings, oh God. And Father, we thank and praise you, oh God, for how you blessed this community. We thank you, oh God, for the rain we received. And we ask, Lord, that you would just continue to bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have some guest speakers tonight, this afternoon. Our first one, and I'm gonna call him, Mr. Barry Dees from Maynor. He talked about, we got a little problem down at Maynor, and I know what he... See if he can help us.
Okay, I'm Barry Dees. I am from Maynor for nearly forty years. Give you a few weeks and I'll have been there.
Good to see you, Ray.
Good to see y'all. I love it.
You too.
Is that, uh, for the first thirty years or so, we had a caution light at intersection of eighty-four and Maynor Millwood and Swanee Chapel, uh, to the south. Well, they under the... When we got ready for the new road construction, they had a person come down there and do traffic surveys. So, he was camped out at Moore, so I stopped and talked to him. He said he did traffic surveys for G... for the GDOT in several different states. And he was really surprised to determine that the commercial traffic on eighty-four was much higher than any other road that he had surveyed in the several states in the southeast. So, lo and behold, so, and that was just with the two-lane highway. So, when we put in the four-lane highway, the DOT, the transportation decided we didn't, we no longer needed a caution light. Uh, so, we, uh, discussed that, and with some help with some other people like, uh, our sheriff Randy Roll at the time, and Commissioner Corbett. They had some traffic signs up there for construction. And we had some Mickey Mouse caution lights attached to the signs. And they just said, "Well, we would just leave those when we get highway and relieve them." Uh, but, uh, they didn't. They carried them with them. They had, we had nothing for a caution light. And, uh, so Commissioner, I mean Representative Corbett, was on the phone with them, said, "What happened to the caution lights in Maynor?" And they told him, "Well, they up working." He said, "Well, I don't know what part of Maynor y'all put them in, but I'm sitting here and there's no caution light." So, the next day, there was. The Mickey Mouse ones that we had before were back up, and they're in plain view during the, during the daylight. But if there's any kind of weather, et cetera, you never even, uh, excuse me, know that they're there. So, uh, I, I talked to the Department of Transportation about the caution light, or some kind of lights. So, they, uh, so they did a survey. But they did a survey in January. If you know anything about a farming community, that's about the least amount of traffic that you'll have. So, they told me, said, "Well, if, if need do, we'll do another survey in a year," which we put January again. But if you've been through Maynor lately, if you spent much time around the caution light, especially since we got our new, uh, Dollar General, which sometimes is referred to as the Maynor Mall, that it has certainly increased the traffic even more. But, and people ask me all the time, say, "Barry, you got a garden?" I said, "No, but I got a neighbor that sure has got one." And that's Cor Tim Moore. He ships all over the country. And as of late, the last, uh, few weeks, uh, there's a line of semis waiting to be loaded or either they leaving from the package shed. And then when you throw the cornyas, the blueberries in on that, and then various number of log trucks, and of course, some school buses, it makes for, for a lot of traffic at, at that intersection. Uh, so, some people have asked me to, to bring this up, talk about it. So, uh, at MIC meeting, which is Maynor Improvement Corporation, which is the Maynor Community Center, we were having a meeting about just a few hundred feet from the intersection. And while we have the meeting, uh, we hear a sirens. And the president, as of right now, is of course Sheriff, the Sheriff, Carl James. And so, one of the guys said, "Uh, what is that?" He looks out the window, and one of the other guys said, "Call us, one of your guys." And then we hear another sirens. And he looks out there and, and, uh, so Carl calls SO and says, "What's going on in Maynor?" He said, "They tell me it's a multi-car accident right there at the intersection while we sitting there talking about, uh, the need for some improvements there." So, they told me not to bring up anything else. They afraid it might happen at the same time. But on either end, uh, we have these signs that says "Speed Zone." And they take that literally because they speed right through Maynor, because it says it's a speed zone, so they do. So, we would appreciate, uh, anything that you could do to help us out. Uh, we haven't had a, uh, well, I hate to say a fatality yet, but, uh, uh, it certainly could happen at any point in time. And it's not just for the people in Maynor, it's for everybody that's passing through and their, uh, businesses and their families. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dees. I, I did check with, uh, James about it too, and I've, he, he promised that he gonna do a, get DOT to do another survey on the light, you know, to see if we can warrant a red light there, which we'd like to have a red light if we could. Yeah, okay. James, have you heard anything on it?
I have not, but I could also make a call and see if we can't get a updated traffic study in the growing season or not in the winter for that community.
Any commission want to comment on that?
I just know it's a bad spot because I about got run over there myself. So, um, if nothing else, they need a caution light, they're bad.
They should do a caution light or a red light. We need one of them there. Was it, it was a caution light there for years, like he said. I don't know why that wasn't put back up there, you know? Okay, is any more on that? Not? Mr. Barry, we gonna work on it. Okay. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say a little bit before this, just about who you fixing to call up.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead and call him, and I'll say a little bit.
Okay. Matt Hayes, the car show.
Yes, sir. As he's coming up, he called me, reached out to me. Me and Matt's known each other for probably close to three decades now. He, he's good a man as they come. And what he's wanting to bring and help bring to Waycross is gonna, it's where we gonna benefit in taxes. We'll probably benefit in growth. I mean, and it, and it's gonna, a lot of people, I've heard some comments about a lot of people want more food trucks in Ware County. Well, this would definitely put Ware County on the map to have more food trucks start coming in here for different reasons, especially if we let them come for what he's fixing to explain to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My name is Matt Hayes. Uh, I don't know how many of y'all know, we put on a local car show every three months downtown to try to bring back life to the down, the actual downtown division. Um, been pretty successful, about getting more, every time, every time we do it, more people come. And, um, so now we're trying to expand on that. What we're wanting to do is use the airport to do a bigger car show with a, with a grudge race, which will be participants that, you know, only want to go to, you know, to do the grudge racing. So, they can't do any activities downtown. They can't rev their engines, they can't spin a tire, you know, we're on public streets. Um, we don't have anything local for that. Um, and a lot of people, a lot of people with the car racing, or car shows, would love the opportunity to run their cars. Um, airport is the only thing we have in Waycross. We can go elsewhere. I've done checks elsewhere, but it wouldn't bring money to Waycross. The whole purpose of it is to bring life back to Waycross, some extra life. Where I'm thinking, excess of ten, fifteen thousand people would come to this, including our community. So, it would have things to, to do with children there, you know, things like box houses and stuff. Um, the car meet itself, uh, we have a count of at least eight hundred cars from out of states that would come back to it from our previous, uh, shows that we've had that quit coming to Waycross because it wasn't held in an adequate place where they could put them cars. They're trailer queens, what we call them. They don't drive them. They just drive, uh, put them on trailers, drive them to a nice show, and load them back in the trailer and go home. So, uh, that's what I'm proposing to see if we can get happen. I talked to Dee about it, and he was supposed to have talked to a couple folks. And, uh, I think it would help.
All right. I heard you asking if we could, if you can do it out at the airport.
Yes, sir.
And we have plenty of room out there, James, for, that it wouldn't interfere with anything at that spot, that we can do that?
Well, where are you wanting to hold the actual car show?
The car show, as big as, the airport would have to shut down for a day, kinda like what y'all do with the flying show. You know, it would have to be shut for, for one day, on like a Saturday. And, uh, the, uh, each, each little piece would be separated for safety reasons.
Right.
Um, car show would be on one runway, and what we call grudge racing would be on another runway. And then everybody would, nobody would be allowed to park down that runway. Everybody would be up at the spectator section.
Any comment, y'all?
I got...
There's nobody asking.
Mr. Chairman.
Can it be, John?
I, I got a question. So, so obviously with racing, there's got to be insurance and liability issues there. Y'all gonna keep us out of it?
Yes, you would not be held eligible.
And y'all have insurance to cover?
We would have, we would get insurance. That won't be no problem. And just like any drag race or professional race you go to, you also have to sign a release form.
Right.
And that would relieve Ware County out of any liability.
So, so what we would have to do is just do some research and, and make sure that what we, what, that we can do that out there. Uh, you know, our airport gets federal funds for road improvements or, or different improvements. So, we just need to make sure we could do that before we do that.
Another note on that, I've been asked how much damage it would do to the airport, you know, like to the asphalt.
Right.
Them cars would put less than ten percent of what an airplane takes off or puts down when they, when they come to land.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's no damage that we'll acquire from a vehicle starting off or stopping.
Yeah, I got a, I think I know what it mean, but grudge racing, I gotta spend on that just a little bit.
So, as what we do as, as a car show group, we have groups that come from Jacksonville, Valdosta, some come from Alabama, North Atlanta. They come as big groups. So, when they get down here, like a Mustang group, Corvette group, whatever it may be, they all think they have a fast car. They're street cars. Uh, this would allow them to go out there and have a grudge race.
Okay, so...
Instead of getting out on the streets when they leave our places and running their vehicles.
Okay. Okay, kinda like they kinda, you know, selling wolf tickets to each other, you know?
Yeah.
Who's the best? Okay, so... I guess you, for me, with all this stuff, so, is there any other airport that allows this?
Well, we could rent the Nahana, the old Nahana Airport.
Okay.
But then, you know, all your business would go to Bruntwood, your food restaurants, your more hotels. They just have more over there.
Okay, so that, okay, which Nahana, I don't know if that's like comparing app to app with Waycross.
Well, it's a closed down airport.
Okay, so, okay, just like Pecan Park, you know?
Yeah.
Where they used, okay. But I, like, uh, the manager said, you know, I think, you know, it sounds good, but I would definitely think we need to try to make sure we check everything, cross all the t's, dot all i's before.
That's what we're here for.
And I mean, and like I said, something new. And then we got to shut our airport down basically for that day, for that, so we need to take off.
I think you'll make more money doing this for that one day than what we're just, some of us have discussed on the fuel and inconvenience of a couple people. I mean, we've got, I would need at least six months for my promoter to, to promote this. And that would give plenty of time for anybody to, to schedule any business that they needed on a weekend to fly their planes in or out to move them to Alma or...
Okay, well, I'm glad we got our competent attorney here and maybe saying that we not even thinking about it. She's carrying over in her mind right now, and at some point in time, I know we gonna have to talk with her about this.
Yeah. I got a question. Uh, security in, in, you'd have to have an ambulance and all there.
Yes, sir.
Do y'all take care of all that?
We would pay for the, the, uh, the ambulances and all that, and...
Okay.
Any, often any officers that might would, you know, help patrol it.
Is all the catering, the food trucks and all, will they be local or will they come with the show?
They would come, no, they would come from...
Different.
Most of them's gonna be local.
Round here.
But we, we want to bring more in. Um, the, like I said, the main thing is to bring money to Waycross. It's not to take money out of Waycross. So, every, every person we have that's in Waycross, we would want to be there.
Okay. Any more?
I like it when he called me. I mean, he, he had his eyes dotted, his t's crossed. I mean, everything was, he was above board with everything, not trying to shoot anything in without our knowledge or support. Uh, I mean, Matt, Matt is a man of his word. He's got Douglas integrity. And he's not gonna sit here and blow smoke at us if, you know, he couldn't handle it because he's already doing this in other areas. Okay.
Okay, what other area you doing, essentially? What, where you doing it at?
Well, we're doing the downtown, and then we do other car shows, um...
I mean, something of this same level, you know?
No, this is the fir-, this actual, this particular thing with a car show and a drag race all combined, it will be its first. And that's why I think it'll be such a good hit. Because there's, there's places that has really big car shows, but no, no drag racing. And then you can either go to a big drag race and no car show. So, you don't have opportunities for these young folks, or younger generation, to get out and, and put their car on a track. I don't know anything about the drag race. And I know every one of you probably run the roads back in the day, had horsepower cars. Uh, these young folks don't have that. The closest track was Douglas, and it's closed down. Um, now they have to go all the way to Adele. And that's a, that was another place I've, I have talked to the track owners over there. I can do this over there, but once again, it doesn't bring money to Waycross.
Again, I think we need to just move, you know, cautiously. It's the first time, and get with the attorney, and also with the manager, and the airport, and everybody that's involved, all the players, to make sure that we not, you know, like I said, it sounds good, you know?
All right. Now, let us, uh, let us think about it and see what, get together. Okay, John?
I may have missed it, but did you say what time of year you're planning on doing this?
I have, uh, not from the promoter we got involved with, would let, soon as I can get a yes from y'all or a no from y'all, would let me know when, when the best time of year is for that. Some are not too hot, kinda like last two months, you know? Uh, so being part of all the next time this year.
Yeah. It does seem like we have a lot of stuff in April.
Yeah.
And it seems like everything, everything that happens in Waycross is in April, and probably need to spread it out to some other place.
He would look, he would look at all the stuff that we have going around, and then he'd schedule for that.
Got you.
Okay. Uh, how, how long will this thing last? All day long?
Just, yeah, all day, one day fair.
All day. Okay. All right.
And they would police up their own area. We've also talked about that. They would police up their own area when they're done.
Yes, they would, okay. Everything will be cleaned. We'll have the Porta-Johns out there. Everything will be covered by us.
Okay. All right. All we have to do is get back with you.
All right.
And, uh, let you know, but we'll, hopefully we'll let you know in...
Thank you, John.
Maybe a month.
Thanks for coming, Matt.
I, I missed, I'm gonna apologize, I missed a roll call on this meeting. Let's do a roll call if you would. Mr. Burse.
Brother.
Mr. Tindall.
Here.
Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Cheers, you. Okay. Now, we have another guest speaker. Now we have another guest speaker. Uh, Brooke Strickland. Yes, God, is he here?
My leg fell asleep back there. Give me a minute. How much time do I got?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, all right. Um, appreciate y'all allowing me to come speak today. Um. I'll just say that, as y'all know, last year, twenty twenty four was a big year for something known as the UNESCO World Heritage Site. That got, um, there was an effort made to bring it into the county, into the swamp, not just Ware County, but several counties. And, um, as y'all know, we we didn't have any say so in it. Uh, the county commission didn't. And those citizen of the county, it's just kind of, I think we all kind of watched it progress and here it is, it's coming. Um, that that bid was submitted, um, to UNESCO and my understanding is for for the next year or so. They're looking over the portfolio that was put together and they're gonna decide whether or not they want to accept the Okefenokee as the UNESCO World Heritage Site. Um, my my concern is with, you know, UNESCO is is a branch of the United Nations and they work to to, um, enforce the overall goals of the United Nations. The overall goals of the United Nations is me and several others, um, in this county. In this county, but also in in this Okefenokee region, uh, Bradley, Charlton, several. Uh, we we've studied the United Nations and it's just not, it's not an organization that we want to have anything to do with. Um, there, you take what America stands for and you flip it upside down and that's the United Nations. Um, you could look at their their godless atheist beginnings. You can look at their, uh, lack of respect for any kind of, uh, human right, especially, uh, constitutional rights that we cherish for so long here in America. Um, I'm not here to ask y'all to stop that bid. I don't know how you would even go about doing that. What I want to do is what I'm asking though is for the county to take some precautions, um, that I believe are within y'all's, uh, y'all's jurisdiction and y'all's power. UNESCO in their, when they, when they implement a world heritage site, there are, there's operational guidelines that they go by. And those operational guidelines, uh, encourage the implementation of Agenda twenty thirty. And I don't know if anybody's heard anything about Agenda twenty thirty, but, um, it is, the UN calls it the master plan for humanity. Um, there's just, they have, it's a lot of lofty goals that sound good, but they're they're unattainable. And even if they are attainable, it's not the goal of the United Nations to be doing that in a sovereign country like ours. Uh, they want to end all poverty and, uh, redistribute wealth, not only amongst those that are in within the country. But they want to redistribute wealth within countries in the world. They want to level out all countries. So you don't have any poor countries and you don't have any super rich countries. All this is a part of this agenda. There are seventeen, um, Sustainable Development Goals and a hundred and sixty nine targets within those. So we we definitely don't have time to go into all of that, but I just wanted to hit a few highlights and just kind of share. Kind of explain the best I could, a concern and a need for Ware County to have a resolution or an ordinance of some kind saying that, you know, we're not necessarily trying to stop the World Heritage Site, but any of these extra, uh, extra agendas that come with the United Nations that were decided on overseas by people that none of us elected with totally different belief system systems. They're incongruent with the U.S. Constitution. They're they're not gonna come out into our communities and they're not gonna be implemented on the sovereign American soul, which is what the Okefenokee is. Um. It's it. And and it's just very, very vague language. It's hard to nail down specifically what they'll do. And I was talking to a guy who travels the world following, uh, the UN and reporting on Agenda twenty thirty. And he said, anytime the UN always deals in really vague language, um, and you can, you can bet it's because they're hiding something. And you won't know exactly what they mean until their foot is in the door and they can, they start implementing stuff. Uh, I will say this. The U.S. delegation back in March to the United Nations, I guess under the new Trump administration. Uh, Mr. Edward Hartney, he's a counselor for Economic and Social Affairs at the U.S. Mission to the UN. I was very thankful to see this. Uh, the UN was wanting to pass a resolution and this was his response to it. Uh, we have a concern that this resolution is a reaffirmation of Agenda twenty thirty and the Sustainable Development Goals. Hartney Hartney said, although framed in neutral language, and that's what, that's that vague language. It's hard to tell exactly what they're gonna do. That's what they said. Agenda twenty thirty and the Sustainable Development Goals advance a program of soft global governance that is inconsistent with U.S. sovereignty and adverse to the rights and interests of Americans. Put simply, globalist endeavors like Agenda twenty thirty and the SDGs lost at the ballot box. Therefore, the United States rejects and denounces the twenty thirty agenda for sustainable development and the Sustainable Development Goals. And it will no longer reaffirm them, reaffirm them as a matter of course. And with this, with the Ware County, uh, resolution or order ordinance, whichever y'all thought was best. I'm just, I believe that i- if it's coming, ultimately it's up to UNESCO whether or not they they accept that bid. But, um, not to leave that in their hands, but to go ahead and be proactive and and do what, um, what this U.S. delegation just did at the UN and say, we also denounce and reject the principles of Agenda twenty thirty. We're not gonna allow our backyard to be a place for y'all to come and and experiment with your globalist i- ideas, you know? Especially when when they're proven to go against, um, you know, American ideals and views on rights. So, um. Had a lot of stuff here. Um, in in the absence of this, I would just ask, you know, if somebody decided, well, maybe that's not that important. Um. If it comes here. And they begin to implement it, I I think that we're, we're leaving ourselves a little bit vulnerable. Because, uh, when they start implementing those things, they'll they'll do it through, you know, some people are talking about, um, UN soldiers being out there. They they don't do that kind of stuff. They don't come in and implement this stuff. They go through our channels, through our legitimate departments and and, uh, officers and things like that. When they start handing that stuff down, you know, are we gonna leave it to a a federal employee out there? Or the manager at the Wildlife Refuge to say no to Agenda thirty? Would would they even recognize what some of these these goals are and be able to say, oh, that that's a United Nations, uh, initiative that infringes on on, um, rights and things like that? So, um, I just don't think, not to mention, there are some park employees who are against this and you.
Brooks.
Sorry.
I'm being told that's.
Oh, so sorry. I'm sorry. That's good. All right.
But if you got any of those notes, you can leave with me.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make some copies up and I'll pass it around.
One hundred percent. And I've I've emailed some things to y'all. Maybe I sent it to the wrong email and I apologize.
It's all right.
I got, I got more information, so for sure.
I appreciate you coming and I am highly, highly interested in what else you got.
Can I real quick just ask that? Everybody who's in favor of a resolution and feels like we need a resolution in Ware County, would you please say?
It's overwhelming.
Thank you. This is a very important matter to citizens of not only Ware County, but surrounding counties in the Okefenokee region.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Brooks.
Sir.
Thank you.
All right. So Travis, we're gonna give you a little time. Five minutes.
Thank you for for the opportunity to speak again. Um, I was here a couple of months ago. And again, it's kind of to, uh, to go along with what Brooks had mentioned, um. The, uh, the most, most important things to remember, and he he touched on is that these, these, um, these UN policies and, um, agendas, like you said, they they don't, they don't, they don't come with a, uh, with a United Nations stamp of origin. It's not, um, and it, this stuff, this stuff comes down through through our own system, through our own government. So I I'm opposed to the nomination of the Okefenokee as a world heritage site, um, for multiple reasons. I won't get into all of that. But, um, I think Ware County, I think the commission should, should formally oppose the nomination. And. Cause Ware County, like Brooks said, didn't didn't have a a direct say and doesn't have a direct say in whether or not this nomination happens. And. But Ware County, the the commission and the residents of Ware County and the surrounding counties will have to live with any consequences of it. So the, uh, I I think Ware County has a an obligation to to protect its residents and citizens. To, uh, to protect against the encroachment of these undesirable UN agendas. Okay. Um. There's, um, let me grab my. Something I wanna read right here for you. There's, um. There's, uh, I read a, uh, a portion of a a book by Jeremy Grabkin. He's a, he's a law professor at the Scalia Law School, George Mason University. And in in his book, it's called Why Sovereignty Matters, um. He he talks about how how this international law and, uh, how it comes down in into our our system. I'll I'll just read a a short quote from that. Um, international law has many avenues into the American political system. Treaties, of course, are the most direct and traditional path. An exclusive focus on treaties, however, may prompt one to think that international commitments can be kept in check simply by the vigilance of the Senate. In fact, many international commitments are now made by executive agreement without formal ratification by the Senate. And even with formal treaties, what seems at the outset a rather innocuous agreement may draw the United States into a continuing political or regulatory involvement with unanticipated and sometimes quite startling consequences. So. He he's making the point that that comes through executive agreements, which it, we don't have any Senate protection. Uh, we we don't have congressional protection from that. That's, uh, that's the president. That's how we got, I mean, everybody knows about the Paris Climate Agreement. That was a, an executive agreement. And. Through that, then then comes presidential executive orders. And and that's where, um, there are several examples. The Bill Clinton's nineteen ninety three executive order established the President's Council on Sustainable Development. And they they put out a report in ninety nine called called Towards a Sustainable America. And that that report and that, um, that council. That is how a lot of these, um, these United Nations climate policies have been ushered into our, um, into our system. And, uh, so that, again, I I think we need to, as a county, make sure that we are vigilant and taking steps to protect against that. Cause.
Okay, time's up.
Yeah, I've got a lot more on that. I'd like another fifteen minutes or so, but, um, thank you for your time.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
More information, you want.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, sir.
All right, yeah. Have, have. Five minutes.
I want to hit on three main points, uh, following the the last two. Well, it's, uh, important for the county to take a stance, uh, in protecting their citizens. Number one, uh, would be long term effects of the UNESCO designation. Uh, I was reading in the New York University Journal of International Law and Politics. How the UNESCO World Heritage Convention uses their endangered listing as a a taking. Now, that was, uh, some legal jargon for, I'm a lawyer, but that's, uh, taking a piece of property and passing, uh, ordinances and policies or whatnot. That would make that property, uh, essentially useless for the landlord. And that's essentially a taking of the property. Uh, if the designation occurs here, uh, well, nothing's gonna happen for a couple of years. Uh, they, if something like that happened, they'd never have another designation. That has been done in the past in that journal. Uh, in some countries, even the World Bank, which is a another part of the United Nations. Now, they make some of their decisions for that country based on UNESCO's decisions from their committee of the twenty one or twenty two foreign nations that make the decisions on all these properties. There's a lot of forest land surrounding the Okefenokee. And now we may be talking twenty years from now, we may be talking forty years from now. Once it's a world heritage site, it's a world heritage site forever. UNESCO is the only one that can remove it, unless there's some, uh, big revolution or something. Now, so we need to look at the long term effects of that potential designation and protecting the citizens. Uh, number two, uh, be the economic impacts. Now, the study was done in-house. Uh, some of their numbers, uh, they looked a little far fetched. I'm not sure whether they had a. Uh, I ran some lines of progression on, uh, visitation statistics on several other world heritage sites in the United Nations. Now, some of them were pretty well flatlined. Uh, Carlsbad, New Mexico, that was one of the most recent, uh, natural world heritage sites. I mean, their line was going down. They, uh, which one was it? Uh, Redwoods, uh, National Park or something in California. That was pretty well flatlined. Uh, now some of them did increase. Now, there's no definite, uh, increase from the point where we see the world heritage site. So a lot of that stuff is, uh, just floating about. Now, there's that study, uh, take it with a grain of salt. And also my third point would be, uh, a lot of people think that UNESCO is too big for us. Uh, it's just out of our hands. And we've got to start somewhere. And I want to leave on the note, uh, First Samuel, Chapter fourteen with Jonathan and his armor bearer. Uh, the Philistines, we'll use UNESCO as the Philistines. And, uh, this area, Okefenokee, and where Jonathan and the armor bearer, uh, they went out to, um, conquer those Philistines on their own. And the Philistines were like, no, y'all come up here and all the other Israelites are hiding in their holes. Well, when Jonathan and his armor bearer got out there and started, you know, uh, their battle, uh, that got the Israelites to come out of their caves, out of their holes, you know, and come and fall. Uh, so we could be that starting point, uh, to fight this kind of thing, or at least protect citizens. And that could, uh, potentially get other areas to to stand up and do the same thing. Now, we can't be, can't be afraid of something just because it's big. Uh, there's a power in numbers, but there's also power in courage. That's, that's what I leave with.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Glad you came.
Does the commission got any comments on this?
Do we have someone from here, Brooks, that know for the local swamp?
We have.
I mean, I have any questions you might have. I didn't prepare a statement or anything.
Would you come up, would you come up to the podium, please?
Uh, so, yeah, I'm I'm Michael Losk. I'm the manager of the Okefenokee National Wildlife Refuge. And, uh, the designation these gentlemen are referring to would be for the Okefenokee National Wildlife Refuge specifically, just just that area. And, uh, I I guess, um, just just to make a couple of comments, I I understand the concerns, uh, that they have expressed, but I I would assure everyone that the, uh, the convention under which the Okefenokee, the World Heritage Site is overseen. Um, it's a treaty that was signed by the President of the United States, Richard Nixon, in nineteen seventy two. It's actually one of the few, uh, executive actions that's received by. It's actually one of the few executive actions that's received by broad bipartisan support. Both Ronald Reagan and Donald Trump have supported the World Heritage Site program. Even when Ronald Reagan and Donald Trump took the United States out of the United Nations, they continue to support the World Heritage Site program because the convention specifically says that if a place becomes a world heritage site, it does not affect the sovereignty of the country in any way, shape, or form. It does not give the United Nations or UNESCO the ability to implement any agenda at all, including Agenda 2030. It doesn't give them authority to do anything like that. And I would point to the fact that we have 26 world heritage sites right now in the United States, and we've had them since 1974, so almost 50 years. So we now have several hundred years, if you add all that together, of managing world heritage sites within the United States, including places like where the Declaration of Independence Hall, where the Constitution of the United States was signed, the Alamo in Texas, the Statue of Liberty, iconic sites of American freedom are all parts of the World Heritage Site program. And there's not a single example anywhere in those 50 years of any UN or UNESCO agenda being implemented. It simply has not happened. I would point out that actually, the Okefenokee National Wildlife Refuge is actually already part of the convention overseen by UNESCO, where Rams are a wetland of international importance. We've been that since about 40 years. And in that time, I've heard no complaints, no concerns that any UN agenda would be implemented, and there hasn't been in those 40 years. And no one's ever even voiced a concern about it. And so this would be simply another convention that's overseen by UNESCO. I would point out that, like I said, that the World Heritage Site program has seen large bipartisan support, including here in the state of Georgia for the designation of the Okefenokee National Wildlife Refuge. If you guys have not seen it, this letter came out about three weeks ago from Sonny Perdue, former governor of the state of Georgia, and under President Trump, the Secretary of Agriculture, expressing his support for us becoming a world heritage site. Last week, Lieutenant Governor Burt Jones wrote a letter expressing support for the Okefenokee National Wildlife Refuge becoming a world heritage site. And of course, Buddy Carter has expressed his support. And so, given that those three gentlemen and both Ronald Reagan and Donald Trump have all supported the World Heritage Site program, I think it's pretty clear direction there that they're not concerned that this program is going to bring in the UN agendas into the United States or affect in any way, shape, or form the sovereignty of the United States of America. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, anybody got a question?
I got a couple.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Once this is done.
Yes.
And it passes.
Yeah.
People can get to vote on it, which I think is the number one biggie. I think the people in Ware County, Charlton County, and Clinch County should be able to vote on this since there is a portion of the swamp in all three of these counties. And they need to let the city vote on it as well as the county. My question is, is who is the owner of United Nations-designated areas? Who becomes the owner?
The United States of America.
Okay.
Or whatever country it's in. Like I said, it doesn't change the sovereignty of that nation over the property.
Okay. Second question is, some people I have spoken with and some reading I have done, they believe that that will increase our tourism traffic, thereby making more tax money. We've already got between 500 and 600,000 people coming to Ware County every single year to see. I mean, you know what the numbers are yourself because you're the superintendent out there.
Right.
Okay? I don't see it getting much bigger than that. I really don't. And the last thing is, I got some paperwork at the House. You say it's not to change anything. Their goal is not to come in this county and change anything from us, right? That's what you said?
So I don't know anything about their goals. I didn't say that. I don't know what the goals of the UN are or anything like that. All I'm saying is that there's nothing in the treaty that gives them the ability to do that. And we have not seen any examples of that in the 50 years that we've had world heritage sites in the United States.
And a lot of those places that are world heritage sites right now, you said there was 24 of them?
There's 26 in the US.
26 of them? They did start somewhat, some of them was eight years, some of them was 10, some of them was even 20 years later. But they started putting their own educational system in elementary schools at every one of those places.
I am not aware of any examples. In fact, you know, when we had a public meeting in Ware County, we invited in Mr. Barclay Trimble, who's the superintendent of Mount Hayes National Park in Kentucky. And we invited him because that's a fairly rural community, such as around the Okefenokee as well. And, you know, we asked him directly in front of everyone, can you tell us about your interactions with the UN? And he said, there's none. Every five years, he prepares a report that he sends up to the American government, and then what they do with it, I assume they send it to UNESCO, I don't know. But he's never had any interactions with them. And at least in that rural area of Kentucky, there has been no influence by the United Nations in any of the local schools or anything of that nature. So that's, I don't know about any, I can't vouch for the other 26 sites in the United States. I just don't know of any examples, that's all.
Appreciate all the speakers coming, speaking.
Yes, sir.
But before I leave, can I leave you a copy of the.
Yes, I'd like to get a copy.
Hold on, he wants to ask you, he wants to ask you a question.
This is the resolution we passed.
I think we spoke about this.
Yes, sir. I'm a Charleston County Commissioner, my third term. And so we passed this piece of legislation just to protect private property rights essentially. Alabama, Tennessee, Louisiana have all passed similar bills, and I think they've all been preemptive. And it basically says that no policy recommendation, rule, or regulation will be implemented or enforced if it's directly attributable to United Nations. And that's what we're concerned about. So, you know, not what happens necessarily in the swamp, but buffer zones. That's one thing that was not mentioned earlier. They can say, oh, because again, this is not NATO. These aren't people we go to war with. These are the people we go to war against. Pakistan, Cuba, Afghanistan, Venezuela, all members of UNESCO. So they sit around a table and they talk about, oh, this site's threatened. And then they say, oh, you can't do that next to UNESCO. And then before you know it, they're lobbying for policy changes. So again, the deed would still be the American, you know, Okefenokee Swamp. But again, they have, there's policy recommendations that were influenced by UNESCO. And Trump and Reagan took us out of UNESCO. Biden administration said the reason for rejoining is because China was using the program to push their foreign policy agenda. So it's no different than TikTok or anything else. They get their foot in the door because they're large contributors to UNESCO's annual budget. They have a lot of influence. So again, this is just preemptive. This is a, you know, document that we passed from Trump, and it basically says, you know, it's buffer zones, if it's us enforcing, if you're asking us to change the law, we're not going to do it. So it's just a sovereignty, autonomous-type document. I think it's worth noting, too, that Okefenokee Swamp's a national wildlife refuge for animals. It's not a national park, ziplined. So the tourism, sometimes they'll argue they want more tourism, other times they want less to protect the animals. So the national, that's a national wildlife refuge, not a national park. So they don't want, Mr. Losk and I are good friends, but they don't want so many tourists that it hurts the animals. But then they'll argue, we need more tourism for, you know, so they argue both sides of that coin. So again, this is about sovereignty, freedom, and liberty on a county level. Hopefully, the state will pass similar legislation. All of our adjacent states have passed something that's very similar to that. You can Google it. If you have any more questions, I thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right, thanks, yes. Any more questions?
Yeah, again, Mr. Chairman, as I was about to say, appreciate all the speakers. And I guess the thing, I have a couple of things that's kind of baffling to me is, all of a sudden, you start hearing about this UNESCO. I haven't heard anything. And all of a sudden, it's on the forefront of everything, and you got people saying this on one side, people on this side saying something else. And I heard the gentleman allude to something about the Project 2030, you said?
2030.
2030. So you got all these different projects out here, you know, to say this project 2030, 2025, all these different projects coming. So you got all these different things that's coming out. And my thing is, UNESCO has been here, we've had these national heritage sites for, since, what, 72, I believe it is? And it hasn't been any problem, but all of a sudden, now it seems like everybody's saying, you know, the sky is falling, you know, they're going to come in and take over. And I'm wanting to try to find out and get all the information. I can't abide it. But as I see it right now, I don't know if we just kind of having a knee-jerk reaction or what. I don't know what it is.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something if I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Barry.
I don't know everything I need to know about it, but most of my area is in the rural park along with the swamp park. And I bet I've had 150 calls of people that's against it, that don't want to do this. And like I say, I don't know everything I need to know about it, but I'm going to vote of what my taxpayer wants me to do. And I'm ready to let's get a resolution.
Okay, are y'all agreeable with a resolution to stop it or to be against it?
Mr. Chairman, right now, at this point, I couldn't, in all clear conscience, say I'm going to get a resolution because I don't even know if we really know what we're revolting against or what we get in the resolution part.
I think what we need to do is study a little more and then do a resolution.
I think we need to study a little bit more. Because right now, it's almost like we're getting just one side of it, you know? And actually, when I get ready to make a decision, I want to make it based on the information that I have after disseminating and going through the facts of it. But just for somebody to come and say, hey, we don't need that, I just can't go along with that. I don't operate that way.
Mr. Chair. I would like to make a note, Mr. John, Mr. Leonard, everybody out here, just a little thought process here. Clinch County and Charlton County, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, they have already voted against this. Is that correct?
Well, like I said earlier, we weren't for no vote, and even.
Y'all just, y'all put them.
Yeah, that same.
They got a resolution here. They got them.
So y'all were being proactive instead of reactive. And kind of like where we're sitting now, we're, it's almost like we're being reactive instead of proactive. Because we're the only ones who haven't done this, and y'all and Clinch have.
Has Clinch passed a resolution? I'm not sure. I don't think Clinch has passed a resolution.
I believe they have. I was in some training a couple of weeks ago, and there was some Clinch there, and there was some Charlton there, and, okay.
Mr. Chairman. So from what I'm reading of this, and, Mr. Commissioner, you might be able to confirm this or not or whatever, but this doesn't say that we're against UNESCO coming in, or because we don't really have an option on that as far as how they're doing this process. What this is saying is that if they're trying to put a policy in place that would affect us and our citizens, that we're against any policy that would infringe on our rights.
And only if it's in this jurisdiction.
Right, only in our jurisdiction. I mean, we can't control what happens in Charlton County, we can't control what happens in Bacon or Pierce or whatever. This is just saying that if it affects us and our citizens in an adverse way, then we're against it. Or we're not going to allow the policy to take place.
We felt helpless, and we said, well, this is all we can do. Hopefully, the state will do it, all surrounding states have done it, and all we can do is protect the county aspect.
So this has nothing to do with whether they come in or not?
No, that's right.
Right. This just has to do with the fact that if they're trying to make a policy that's going to have an adverse effect on us, which the gentleman with the National Wildlife Refuge said he knows of none, but in the event that something does happen, we're protecting ourselves by saying we're not going to abide by any policy that you try to shove down our throats.
Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. That's what I'm saying. Right now, this resolution right now, if UNESCO and UN, if they are as powerful as you say they are, they just have even having their teeth in it if they came. Because right now, by maternity, based on the charter of Ware County and the way the government operates, we have things already in place for something like this to not happen, right?
I think there's a few different considerations that certainly we all to fully understand, fully research, and fully discuss. Just a couple of comments right off is, I think, to, you know, Commissioner Tindall's point, is what this document that's been proposed to you all says is that the Charlton County Board of Commissioners shall not adopt or implement. So what they're attempting to do is control what their own board is going to decide. Now, there are certain legalities as to how you all, as a board, certainly you have the ability to govern yourselves. There are certain restrictions on how you can control future members who are sitting in those same seats, right? So that's just, you know, one initial thing I see right off. But I think we want to understand, to the point the commission just made, is, you know, even the document adopted by Charlton is not against the application to become a world heritage site. It simply is a document saying what Charlton County is going to do in their county, right? And so, you know, you all will just, I think, you know, to Commissioner Versus' point, want to study on, okay, what are our options? What do we currently have in place? You know, what has happened, you know, in these other places that we may have concern about? We may want to address understanding what our limitations are in, you know, our ability to address those. So we certainly can do some homework on it, and then, you know, whatever the board decides that, you know, how they're led, certainly you all can vote, vote as you're led.
Well, I think that would be the wiser and the prudent thing to do at this point. And then when we do make a decision, we're making it based on all the facts that we have about it.
Y'all agreeable with that? Yes, sir.
We'll make a 100%.
Okay.
It's also saying what the county is the American entity, saying what the UN will not include in the county. You see, a lot of the UN stuff comes down from international agreements. It's people way over there, and we don't know what 100% they, what their plans are and their goals are. What we're saying, whatever it's going to be, if they get here and they decide to start footprinting stuff that none of us know about, none of us have agreed to, which brings us on our backs, which goes against a US Constitution, not a resolution, collusion, or ordinance in place saying that's not allowed here. So you can look at it as, we're not saying that they're going to do anything. We're going to go ahead and have that placed because we do have reasons to the league that they will implement things that are against the United States. Because the US delegation said, in the UN general assembly, I don't know their face, we denounce and reject this agenda. Their operational guidelines say that they will, they strongly encourage Agenda 2030 to be implemented in a world heritage site. That world heritage site is going to involve a large chunk of our county. So it is, it's proactive to say, you know, we're not even stopping UNESCO. We're saying, when y'all cross this line, we're letting them know we're against it. It's not going to be allowed, it's going to limit it. If you're not going to come here, you're just going to be a volunteer, you're applying to international agreements which many years ago didn't involve any of us.
Okay, Brooks.
I got one. Can I ask Mr. Brooks first?
Yeah.
Is that okay, John? Is it true or is it not true that it was just discovered that there was a large mass of a certain type metal out there in the middle of that swamp?
In the middle of the swamp? When the property surrounded the swamp?
It's supposed to be somewhere in the mid, within the barrier of the swamp. Yeah, I believe there's a site, there's a type of metal that's a very rare metal. It's not titanium. I can't remember the name of it. I left all my paperwork in my Mustang, and my wife's got it. But there is a rare mineral that is out there, metal mineral, that's out there in that swamp that UNESCO is trying to get their hands on. And I know that's what's coming because that's what UNESCO does. They go in there and they rake and salvage the land, and then they jump to the next one.
Well, let's study this thing a little bit more. We can stay here all afternoon, and we ain't going to settle this. What we need to do to get out of this.
That's right.
And let everybody think about it, study about it. And we thank y'all for coming. We thank y'all for y'all's interest. Go ahead.
Michael Logrue, yeah, I've been paying attention to this for all over a year now. Sat down on a couple of sessions last year, and asked a question there that I never really got an answer to. No matter who controls the swamp, whether it be UNESCO, or whether it be Ware County and Bradley County and whoever else, if it's a world heritage center site, what's going to happen when people, these happy and extra tourists show up at the edge of the swamp and say, oh, the swamp? Okay, what do we do now? Is anybody in. Is anybody in any of this given any thought to infrastructure? What's it gonna take to make it worthy of being a UNESCO designated site or any kind of advertised site? If there's nothing to do there, once you walk up to the door and look, and then you have to walk away. You know, uh, the counties and the state and the feds, since it's a world, uh, heritage or worldwide, uh, federal site, uh, it's gonna mean massive infusion of cash and time and effort to make it worth going to see anyway. You need to leash some mild nature trails. You need multiple entry points for boat trips. You know, where is all this? Where's, when is that gonna be in place? So this is another county expense, uh, multi-county expense that has to be considered before we agree to any kind of super advertising. That's my opinion.
Okay. All I can do is anybody that wants to visit, come after May when the yellow fly come out and don't wear no shirt. And you'll leave down there pretty quick.
Yeah.
Now, let's go on. All right, we're gonna get y'all's answer on that. On the agenda, appointment for the Ware County Board of Elections. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you may, if I may, I'll, I'll try to.
We have two, don't we?
Yeah, I'll tell you these though. I'll explain both of these at one time.
Okay.
That way we can move on. Uh, so we have two terms expiring for the Board of Elections. The first term is post one and the second term will be post two. Post one is currently held by Dr. Rodney Brown. Uh, Dr. Brown has informed the board that he does not wish to be reappointed. The Republican Party had submitted names for the, uh, for the appointment of that board. And those names are Andrew Preston, Grayson Grob Smith and Karen Woodard. And also Ms. Elizabeth Pond sent me an email asking to be a committed, or committed, considered to, for appointment of that board. And, um, and those re, re, um, applications, resumes are in your, in your packet. And then also in post two, the, uh, which is occupied with Vernon Chambliss. Mr. Chambliss was appointed in September to fill a under inspire turner. And, um, he served brief time on the board and he wishes to remain on that board. So, um, to post two, you have the same names, um, as you do as no, as post one, which would be Andrew Preston, Grayson Grob Smith, and Karen Woodard and Ms. Elizabeth Pond, and then also Mr. Vernon Chambliss, uh, would be, could be considered for that to, um, stay appointed. Uh, the chairman, uh, term will expire also, uh, but according to House Bill four twenty-two, four twenty-two, once the board, once the appointments are made for post one and post two, then the board will appoint the chairman for that board.
Okay.
And these terms will go from, uh, July one of twenty-five to June thirty of twenty-nine. And that's both post one and post two.
Okay. So what we need to do is y'all, y'all form a regular meeting. Is that correct? Is any discussion on these, what's, what's happening? Y'all know what some, what we're gonna do?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Giddens?
Yes, sir. Can I address the commission?
Come on up.
Deborah Giddens, Millwood, Georgia. I'm the chairwoman of the Ware County Republican Party. I just want to be sure to clarify to you that the Republican Party has submitted four recommendations for your consideration. And those recommendations are Mr. Vernon Chambliss, Mr. Grayson Grob Smith, Mr. Andrew Preston and Ms. Karen Woodard. Our Republican Party has not submitted the name of Ms. Pons. So I want to be sure that you're aware and that's, that's clarified. I don't know if she's a Democrat or independent, but each party, organized county party has, according to the law, has the right to s- submit to you people for consideration to the appointment, uh, to the Board of Elections. So I want to be sure you understand that our Republican, um, recommendations to you are Chambliss, Grob Smith, Preston and Woodard.
Okay. All right, y'all got any questions for Ms. Giddens?
No, just also, Mr. Chairman, I guess just to the attorney, uh, according to House Bill four twenty-two, and she's right, you know, the different parties can, you know, submit, you know, names. And then in someone else, we could even submit a name if we wanted to. So I just want to make sure that's understood. And also the, in the House Bill four twenty-two, even with the part of making these recommendations, nomination, uh, be, we don't have to accept those names.
Yes, sir. We are aware of that.
We can pick them from our own.
Right, that's right. So I just want to make sure that's clear also.
Yes, sir. It is clear to us that you do not have to accept any of our four recommendations.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Giddens. Okay. Any more on the borderline? Okay, we'll carry it over. I had a bid award for lawn maintenance for the Ware County properties. Uh, the Southeast Lawn Pro will expire. Okay, have you, you got all the quotes on, how many, how many do we have?
Yes, we had eight bids.
Huh?
We had eight bids. We had a bid opening on May the second, uh, twenty twenty-five at three o'clock PM. And then listed are the, uh, per month bids.
Okay.
Uh, on your, also included is your tabulation for those. And, uh, based on the, the bids, um, the first, uh, backup, so currently Southeast Lawn Pro is, is doing, his contract will expire June thirtieth. Um, I spoke with building and maintenance and they have been satisfied with the, the, uh, service they've received from Southeast Lawn Pro. Um, however, our recommendation due to the, uh, bid totals would be to go with Outdoor Living Southeast for twenty-five hundred per month for a total of thirty thousand per year for the maintenance. And this is for sixteen sites.
James, what's the, uh?
Go ahead.
What was the, uh? What's the current contract?
It's, uh, thirty-seven hundred per month.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question on that.
So it didn't go up?
Okay. Um, the one we have now, I understand he also does, does, does sprinkler systems. Is this new guy gonna do the sprinkler systems too?
A- as we asked, they have sprinkler technicians.
Okay.
Um, that's how it's listed, I think, is the sprinklers are done separate.
I, I know he kind of fell in and went to doing that, you know.
But Mr. Corson has been updating our sprinklers and fixing them as, as needed.
I got a question here. Can I ask Mr. Corson? That's right?
Yeah.
The, the price at thirty-seven hundred that you do it for and has done it for the last year for, does that include the sprinkler systems?
No, sir. The price was like around forty-one hundred and they took their four off on the speed.
Okay. Are all these, uh, local companies?
So Mr. Corson is the local company and, um, south, I'm sorry, Outdoor Living Southeast is actually, I believe, out of Valdosta. And there's another local company, and I'm not sure which one that one was, but it's a higher mill.
Gotcha.
So. And we factor in the five percent as well for local.
Okay.
So trying to, um, see where.
Yeah, cause I, I'd like to keep, I like to keep money local anytime I can. Um, I'd almost rather spend a little bit more and keep it local than to, uh, send it outside the county. I mean, you know, I, I think I can, uh, on my mind, I mean, I think I can talk to our taxpayers and say we paid a little bit extra than what we would if we went outside the county and kept the money right here inside bars instead of sending it over to Valdosta. I mean, I like Valdosta and all that, but we send too much over there anyways.
Yeah.
How much difference is it in the money?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred per month.
Did you, did you get any references on the other company, James, from Valdosta?
On the lowest company, we did. We, we checked all the references and they all were satisfied.
My concern is, is say, we have to get them over here in a hurry. They, are they gonna have to come from Valdosta over here or?
Yep.
In this man's local?
The best I know, the best I know, they would have to come from Valdosta.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it, is what I always say.
Okay, so we're talking about twelve hundred dollars more a month, which would equate to what? About fourteen, fifteen thousand more a year?
Yes, sir.
For the same contract?
But staying under the same budget?
Yes, sir.
It's the same budget numbers as it was last year.
Say, but you know.
The budget last year that he put in was the same amount of money as he bid this year. And so the difference is gonna be not spending more money, just saving money. It's gonna be saving fourteen thousand dollars rather than staying status quo and spending the same money we spent last year.
Okay, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm a big proponent of local, trying to stay local. And we try to make provision for that by giving like a five percent, you know, uh, not discount, but cost to try to offset that. And, uh, and like I said, they've been satisfied with it and, but we're talking about fourteen thousand dollars a year and like I say, if we wanna try to keep it local, but we, at some point in time, we got to save, you know, when we're gonna have to cut off.
I don't know if we can really do that, can we, counsel? This is a bid open, low bidders.
Well, gentlemen, as I always say about bid, you know, we, we certainly have put out the bid for the purpose of getting
Low bidders.
You know, a low bid, um, best bid from a response, a best bid from a responsible bidder. So I think we have to look at, you know, one, make sure we're comparing apples to apples, which is, you know, what you all have gone through and making sure we've gotten the sprinklers out and those sorts of things. And then second, I think, you know, look at the bids themselves. Certainly, you know, you can give consideration toward, uh, local. Um, you know, I will say generally that, um, if you go too far outside of a, um, a local percentage, then you'll have people just stop bidding from outside the locality because, uh, you know, they know, okay, well, they're gonna go local and so we're not gonna bid. Therefore, then you don't have the, um, you know, the, the, the competition to drive down the prices. So I think, you know, for your all consideration, certainly, wha- what we're seeking is, um, you know, the best, which may generally be the lowest bid, but the best bid from a responsible bidder, um, which is why, you know, of course, it was important that Mr. Schubert did check out all the references and make sure there. So, um, you know, it, it's, it's up to you all to determine what you believe to be the best bid in these circumstances. It is, I mean, I was trying to do the math quickly in my head. I think we're looking at, you know, thirty-three, thirty-five percent more than your lowest bid, which is, it is significantly outside the general kind of five percent swing that I think Ware County has given in the past, you know, for what that's worth, but it's up to you all.
And, Mr. Chairman, I did, I talked with the, uh, manager and, you know, asked all the questions I could about it, you know, uh, make sure we're comparing apples to apples. Make sure every, everything is pretty much, you know, apples to apples and, uh, I just, I mean, as bad as I want to try to keep it local, when it's, when it got past a certain point, then I have to ask myself, am I really doing my due diligence as a commissioner here? You know, being stewardess of tight pair of money.
Yeah. Okay. Any more on it? Let's carry it over.
Okay.
All right, a bid award for field maintenance spraying at Trembling Earth. How many bids we have on it, four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had four bids. We had a bid opening on May the second, twenty twenty-five at four PM. And the bids were as follows. Story Landscaping was twenty-nine thousand two hundred. Coastal Sports Turf LLC was thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifty. Service Land Management was fifty thousand four hundred and seventy. And Coastal Greenery was, Greenery was seventy thousand eight hundred. Um, the bid tabulation is attached. We, uh, Lance and I reviewed the, the applications and the bids. Um, and also in there should be a letter, uh, on the backside from, uh, Mr. Addisman, the Recreation Director, recommending that we, uh, go with the contract or the contract would be awarded to Coastal Sport Turf LLC for thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifty. And like to also note that the low, lowest bid, um, did not complete the application. He didn't sign the, uh.
Okay, Story did not sign his application?
Correct. On the, on the rear, the rear page, he didn't sign the consent.
Okay.
Okay. So when you say the consent as far as the liabilities and insurance and stuff like that?
It's the consent. He would abide by this contract, I believe, is the one he didn't sign.
He didn't sign it?
No, sir. He left it blank. So, and it says that all.
All documents.
Doctor, he signed, he signed.
Has to be signed. Story didn't sign it. Okay.
And this amount is the same amount as it was last, la- the last contract.
So y'all recommend Coastal Sport?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? All right, let's carry it over. Okay, bid award for, for, for a four post lift for vehicle maintenance job out of the county. So you got the, uh, list price on that?
Yes, sir. We requested bids. We had, uh, one bid. Uh, that bid opening was also on May the second at two o'clock PM. And that bid was an amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Okay.
And that's also including installation.
We agreed to, we told him to bid it out. Any discussion on it?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Does that include the two rolling jacks with this price?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think the manager's back there, Mr. Chairman, or maybe he can.
You wanna, okay, come on up. You got a question for us?
Well, we've, we've, we've talked about this a couple of times and we've already decided this is something that you need out there anyways. And, uh, I think it was something that even before you took the position, the, the commission was considering getting one of these, so it's setting something brand new that we're, that we're trying to push through. This is something you've been needing for a while to, uh, be able to work on. Ambulances and medium duty fire trials. Gotcha, okay.
You satisfied with this?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah, you know, and to piggyback on what Commissioner Tindall was saying, you know, it would make it more efficient because just like, well, in conversation with him this morning, he was stating it just like he has one vehicle on the rack now. He could have another one on there doing something else, but he got to wait till he get this one off before he can do that. So, and this is something we want to try to make the thing more efficient out there. And, uh, and also I think it's what is it, a nine ton? This lift right here. Right. And that was one thing I was concerned about with, for the medium, would it take care of really what he needed? And he assured me that it would.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We'll carry that over. All right, now if, accept the RFP for debris monitoring during declared disaster.
Mr. John? That's Mr. Jonathan's name.
Johnson, you come up here and explain to this what this is. You got two of them.
Mr. Chairman, commission, we, uh, have went out for proposals to, uh, for our debris monitoring services. Uh, and also the, we talked about debris bill services as well. Uh, and also the, we talked about debris removal services as well. Uh, currently, our monitoring service, uh, that we use for our last storm, uh, that contract was under an emergency contract. And we piggyback off of another county's, uh, contract. Uh, what we've asked for at this time is to have our own contract. So we went out for proposals. Uh, we received three proposal, proposals back. And, uh, after reviewing the proposal, we have, uh, we recommend using Thompson Consulting Services as our debris monitoring service company. Uh, we have, uh, based on their experience and their price schedule. Uh, Thompson was also the company that we used during Hurricane, uh, Debbie and Hurricane Helene. Uh, so, um, it's our recommendation that, uh, we provide the, uh, service contract to, uh, Thompson Consulting Company out of, uh, May number four.
Jonathan, can, can you explain to me what the difference between debris monitoring and, I mean, I understand debris pickup or cleanup and everything. What's debris, debris monitoring?
The monitoring company monitors what the debris company picks up. So what they do is certify that debris that the company picks up is legitimate debris that is eligible for reimbursement from FEMA. Uh, so what they do, they go around with trucks and they're picking up the debris from the right of way. They're making sure that their truck is full and not half full. And they're making sure that the type of debris that they're receiving is eligible for reimbursement. Uh, so it's just part of that, uh,
Gotcha.
process when they're picking up the debris. You have to have a monitor to certify what was picked up to be legitimate and that FEMA recognizes their, uh, documentation as being certified.
Gotcha.
It's two, it's two separate companies.
Right.
Do they actually, uh, tell you whether the debris is storm separated from?
Well, they, they determine if it is storm debris. Based on what your contract is, there's a lot of elements in debris pickup contract. In the last two storms that we had, we only did vegetation. Now, you could have C and D, you could have hazardous materials, uh, things of that nature. Uh, but in the last two, uh, storms we had, we only did vegetation. So they're making sure they're only picking up vegetation and not somebody's, uh, uh, barn that got blowed down that might have, you know, shingles or might have, uh, wood or whatever uh, mixed in the, the vegetation. So there's a certifying that they're picking up the correct, uh, material that is provided by the contract.
Okay.
Are, are they the people that's on the tall ladders?
Yes, they're the ones that are at the, uh,
The sites.
At the debris, uh, sites, the, uh, that when those trucks come in, they're up high, they're looking at the bag of those trucks, uh, to make sure that that truck's full. Uh, you know, they don't want somebody come up there and say, well, I got a full truck and it'd really be half empty. And you don't have no way of knowing that because y'all seen the trucks on call, y'all. So you have to have somebody gets up in a, uh, a purr that can look over inside the vehicle. So, and make sure that they got vegetation and don't have some other type of material that's out.
What, do you know right off what we paid them last year?
Uh, in this past storm, it was about, uh, a million and two, three hundred thousand, I think what their part was.
Oh, couldn't we bid somebody from the county to do that? There ain't going, a lot of money there. I believe I can get Timmy, I can hire Timmy to do that. He set up a ladder, check that debris all day.
Now, do they do that based on a percentage of what all?
Yes. It ba- it's based on hourly rate in the percentage, not the percentage of what the company did, pick up though, but their hourly rate to actually do the monitoring, do the paperwork that goes into FEMA. They actually certify, uh, the billing for the pickup company, for the debris pickup company. They certify the billing for that so that they're properly billing us for what's, uh, what owes. Uh, they're just, uh, uh, like I said, they just monitor what we're, what they're doing and make sure that they're in guidelines with FEMA.
So their, and their portion of it, of, of the total invoice that we paid out for all the cleanup, their portion is also reimbursable to us?
Yes, hundred percent.
Okay.
Have we got back any of the?
We have not.
Not even the first?
Not the first.
Their invoices, I thought I probably tabled, will show the time or the, the dates and how much time each, I guess, what is it, department and what it has spent. They'll give you a, for each invoice. It might say this Friday, a half hour, three, four hours.
They do a, a daily, daily sheet. It's called a load ticket. They do a load ticket for each one of those vehicles. Uh, determine the cubic yards of debris that's in those vehicles. Uh, and then they're carried to the, uh, temporary station site and then from that site, then the, uh, debris company comes in, they either burn it or grind it. And they get rid of that part, portion of it. And they follow right along with that, making sure that, uh, that all gets done and it got, guidelines with FEMA. So in order to get FEMA reimbursement, gotta have this, you gotta have it.
Okay.
And one thing, John, I don't know if you mentioned, but we only pay if we have to use this service.
That is correct.
We not on the contract where we got paid a month in.
No, there is no money unless we activate the contract, uh, for some type of, uh, storm declaration. Uh, we may get a presidential declaration or FEMA declaration on some events, but we may not need them for that. So if the commission chooses not to activate, activate these contracts, there, there's no money changed. There's nothing there. They're just, just gives us a pre-event contract in our hand. So when that big event does come, we're not having to scramble trying to find somebody.
Right.
Like a lot of these other counties had to do because they didn't have anything. Uh, once you have a pre-event contract with co- company, then their, their loyalty is to you. You have a contract with them. They're not gonna go to another county. They might make more money in another county. But they have a contract with whoever that county is and that's who they're gonna be loyal to.
So imagine that some of these other counties that didn't have a contract or couldn't piggyback like we did, they're the ones that are still cleaning up these right now.
That's correct.
We've already had our stuff cleaned up. We started cleaning up pretty quick after.
And we, our cleanup started the fifth day after the storm.
Right.
And that was because we had the contract in place that they, Greg would come in immediately start our cleanup.
Right. And that's for these, basically, same, same concept for both of these contracts?
That is correct, yeah. The, uh, so that's for the monitoring company. Our recommendation is to use the, uh, Thompson Consulting Services. They are a company that we have worked experience with. They were the company that we used for the last two decorations. There was three R F Ps and we felt like that they met the best criteria.
Okay.
And then on the debris removal, we had nine companies that who submitted R F Ps. And it is, I, it was our recommendation to, um, present, uh, Crowder Gulf of Mobile, Alabama. They were a company that we've had a previous, uh, contract with. Our first contract we had with Crowder Gulf was the night incident, two thousand thirteen. So we, we've had contracts with this company since two thousand thirteen. We have to renew them every year or go through the R F P process to renew a contract, uh. Helene and Adalia, I said Debbie, I'll go, but Hurricane Adalia were the two hurricanes that we used, Crowder Gulf, to do our debris removal. And based, and based on their work performance and contract and pricing, that was determined that they were the best, uh, company for the debris removal. Also, we added, um, made recommendations that we, uh, re- uh, recommend Horizol Solution L L C out of St. Joseph, Missouri as a secondary debris removal provider. What that does is, basically, you have your primary contractor, you have a secondary contractor. Primary contractor comes in and if the project just gets so big, depending on what it is, then we can activate a secondary contract to help the process to do the cleanup, uh, if it's a, a major, uh, ordeal. Primary company can't, uh, I would say they can't do it in a timely manner. And the commission felt like, you know, we need to get this stuff done and, and it's gonna take them a lot longer based on what they're having to do. If we can activate a secondary provider to come in and help you get it cleaned up in a timely manner. Uh, we recommend that, uh, like I said, Horizol as the, uh, secondary debris removal provider.
Okay.
Again, there's no money. It's just a contract based on, uh, pre-event, having it in place again, making sure that, uh, we do get reimbursement. I will say this, we will get our money from this last hurricane from FEMA. Uh, we will get it. I know how long time coming. A lot of counties around us have started getting some money. Uh, hopefully, they need to put a stamp on that envelope and go ahead and mail that.
Say the check's in the mail.
It's been in the mail, but ain't got a stamp, I guess, but on, uh, anyhow, we will get our money. It's just a matter of.
Well, I, I tell you what, you know, and I, I think we're making the right move, being proactive, getting these contracts in place and companies. But it, it wouldn't bother me if I don't ever see another Crowder Gulf, one of them big trucks in this white car again.
So Jonathan, ju- you know, uh, uh, obviously, I mean, I, I think we've been really fortunate as Ware, as Ware County to not have huge, um, storm issues, uh, such as we had this past year. I mean, I, in my lifetime, I don't know if there's ever been a storm that gets put that much damage on the ground. And I, you know, and so, um, so we've been really fortunate. But so, so how often, though, do we, do we call on these services? You know, since you've been involved with the emergency management, how often have we had to call on these services, um, for, for debris cleanup? And we, stuff that we haven't been able to kind of handle in-house?
Well, my forty-six years, when we called them twice, and that was Hurricane Adalia and Hurricane Helene.
Gotcha. And that's good. I would rather not have to call on other people.
Right, yeah. Now, there's been some other events that we had that we felt like that we could do ourselves. Public work felt like they could do some things and do it timely, and that's what we did. We just let them.
Right, and that's, and that's kind of what I was.
With the event that we had, it was just too much, felt like it's too much for our local, uh, for public work folks to be able to to do it in a timely manner with all the other stuff that public work does from day to day.
Absolutely. Okay.
Also, just, just saying this is the proposal, they'll, after we notify, uh, the company, they'll come back with a contract. We'll present that back to you on the contract approval.
Tell them next time when we sign the contract, uh, that they'll wait on their check from FEMA.
Yeah.
Well, I always have to wait on my returns every year. They can wait on theirs.
I hear you, yeah.
Okay. That's all.
Any other question?
Any more question?
Thank you, Jonathan.
I'll have to roll them over, both of them. Okay. Approve a quick claim deed to transfer property to Wake Rose, Ware County Development Authority.
Mr. County Manager, can you explain this to them?
Yes, sir. This request by the Development Authority to, as part of their cleanup of the deeds, um, back, it's been, I think it's been happening for a few years now, several years. To, for us to quitclaim the deed, or quitclaim to Slither property during the south side of G A T X. Um, it's shown on the map there in red. And this, we've done, I believe that all the other properties owned by the county and Industrial Park has been quitclaimed over to the Development Authority. And this was another one. The only thing that I haven't gotten with Jason with, um, but I just wondered, there's a canal that runs through this property. I don't know if there's any drainage easement on it or anything, so we would need to retain the drainage easement on that canal. If there's not one listed already.
Right away, uh.
And Mr. Rubenbauer is here to, uh, answer any questions he may have.
Are there any utilities running down?
Why does that?
It's a C S, it's a, not C S A, it's a, it's a reserved right of ways where it's missing oil plats. But it has a rail line and that rail line goes down and it goes back into G A T X's property.
I think the county ought to keep that.
Thank you, Mr. Jason, coming up.
Jason.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. So this is property that, uh, actually was part of that original transfer, uh, probably forty years ago or more. Uh, if you recall, G A T X did a major expansion, uh, the year before last, added all the track line. This is that spur that feeds that track line. And so, just like the property that they have on the west side of Industrial Boulevard, they've got a drainage there too, but they maintain that drainage on, on their private property. And I would assume they would do the, the same here. Of course, state law, federal law allows you to go on that property in the event of an emergency if you've got to go ahead and get water flowing. Uh, but other than that, uh, this is just a housekeeping item.
You agree with it? Is it the way you want to handle it?
Absolutely. We found out at the last hour, we're working on some other stuff with G A T X, and we found out this hadn't been done, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
They doing a big expansion out there now, ain't they, building and building?
It's been continued.
Okay. Any, any more discussion on it? Anything on it?
No, thanks. Need, like I said, just trying to clean it up, housecleaning.
And Mr. Chairman, just for clarity for the commission, the deed as currently drafted does not reserve an easement for the drainage. Now, as Mr. Rubenbauer said, you may not desire to reserve that easement, but I just wanted to note that so that, you know, when the vote is ultimately taken, if it is your desire to reserve an easement, that, that's included in the vote. Or it may not be desired to be included. I just want you to know it's not in the document.
Are we looking at, are we managing that now? I mean, it's under the county right now?
It's a reserved right of way that's belongs to Wake Rose and Ware County.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, I just, if we need to go in there, we need to go in there.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we need to just go ahead and approve this and then we get a temporary easement after it's done, we can do that. Or, you know, like he said, if, you know, it's an emergency, we can go in there. Um, the only thing without a survey and a survey where that, that canal is at, is I don't know there's room on this piece of property for that easement. It may have, it may would have to go on the, the bigger piece of G A T X for an easement. I'm not sure, because I haven't seen the survey. Have you got the survey, Jason?
What G A T X is gonna do is they're gonna pipe that entire canal with a very large pipe. So that way, because right now the canal is collapsing and their, their guard shack, the, uh, air conditioning unit on the backside of the guard shack is falling into that area right now. So they've agreed, if we can take this over, they can take this over. They're gonna put a pipe in, they're gonna do all the work. So, and that, because they're the only ones that'll be able to use the, use the property.
Right, and that's the first I heard about the piping, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's gonna affect something to do with G A T X. Okay.
I mean, if they're gonna maintain it, they're gonna put the pipe in, they're gonna take care of it.
They're gonna take care of everything.
That's, that's money we don't have to spend.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, let's move it over. Okay, approve and upgrade repairs to the Pebble Hill Fire Station. Knows about that one.
We got the chief baby.
Chief, come up here and tell us what you're gonna do up, over there.
The work that I've proposed to you is for the Pebble Hill Fire Station. Uh, a while back, we were charged to fix up some of these volunteer fire stations. We fixed up Boggy Bay and we done Wazbur. The next one on the list to be done that needs some pretty good repair is Pebble Hill. And so we will have it brought up to the same, it will look just like the other two fire stations, uh, Boggy Bay and, um, Wazbur, when we get finished with it. It's got to have, there, it, it's, it's just in need of some repair. Wazbur, when we get finished with it. It's got to have, there, it, it's, it's just in need of some repair.
Okay. You got to ask about a six thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars.
Yes, sir.
Was that actually somebody coming out? Putting their eyes on the sign?
Yes, sir. I meant for both people out there. And this is them coming by and looking and seeing what scope of work is to be done. And it'll be done just like, we're trying to keep everything uniform, so everything will look the same. And this will be a benefit to that community and to that building.
Okay.
It's been a long time coming.
All right. You did have two bids?
Yes, sir. And there are local bids, so there are people from Wake Rose and Wake County that are doing it.
Mr. Chairman, the last one is the, uh, scope of works on the last page behind the image of the, um, uh, fire station. Very bad.
How about you got fifty-two hundred? Okay. Look at that. You recommend that one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They want thirty-nine, they want seventy-five percent of the money.
We're recommending the sixty-two.
We recommend the six, six thousand two hundred seventy-five. If you look at the scope of work on the, uh, cheaper bid, um, they were proposing to put metal fascia on pressure-treated wood. You can't do that. It will rock down. It'll.
And they also require seventy-five percent down.
I've been bidding forty-seven years and I never got no damn payment on those jobs. How do you do that?
I don't know. I need to find out.
You pay me four, I stop.
Yeah.
Sixty-two is the one you recommend?
I don't get a job with them.
They were, they were, well, the first one had, was going to put metal over pressure treatment.
Right.
And then they wanted, uh, part of their money upfront, and the other gentleman did not. And the other gentleman also done some more inspection on the roof and the other parts of the building that needs.
Well, and that's what I was fixing to ask, but he was talking about that the roof is going to need repair.
Yeah.
A replacement soon.
He, yes, the, the roof will need repaired and replaced soon, but he did say we have some life in it. Now, one of the things that I would like to ask y'all, and I was going to get with the manager, is while he's out there, could I go ahead and get him to give their price on fixing the roof as well? Because it may be cheaper since he's there to get him to do both of it and just get a price of it and see what it would cost to get the roof going. Since he's already going to be on site.
It's always cheaper to get it all done together than it is for him to come back in six months later.
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, because I was, I was going to ask, is, probably need to go ahead and get the roof done as well while we're already out there with ladders.
Chief, could you explain too about the rea- the rationale behind not being, not putting the aluminum fascia on?
When you put, when, when you put pressure-treated fasci- uh, fascia over and you put metal over the top, there's some chemical in this new pressure treated that will eat the nails into, and it will eat the metal. So therefore, what we would put up would eventually have to be replaced by taking it down and putting more wood back up and then going back and putting something else up. So it's just not conducive to what we want to do. We don't want to spend that money after we do it.
Where, where will the money come from, James, to do this?
Uh, we could use, we could, uh, use Splos account, or I think Chief said he has it in his budget to fix this one. Is that what you said?
You got it in Splos.
Chief, hit me fresh from a memory here, but whenever we gave it a green light to do these stations, it was a certain amount of money that we allocated to you.
When I was asked to do this under the previous, uh, manager, there was money that was put away for us to do the stations. I done two stations, which was, uh, Boggy Bay and Wazbur. And then I was told to stop and not do no more.
So was the money still in their account for that?
They were taking it, I believe at that point, it was coming from either ARPA or it was coming out of Splos. The previous one. ARPA, and so now we're having to come, but this repair, it is big, is the two previous repairs that we had to do to the other two sections. They were a lot more significant compared to what this one is. As far as the expense of it.
I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, that this is something that really needs to be done. That building looks bad from the road. The, the whole front of it was falling in, and it really looked bad. Something needs to be done.
Done with that sixty-two?
And this was, and this is, yeah, this needs to be done.
All right, we carry it over.
Appreciate you, Chief.
All right, James. The Board of Elections text by Gov. Software update. Now, Mr. Nelson, will you come up, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, the Board of Elections, um, last month, um, built over a texting program for the voters of Wake County. And, um, I wanted to give you a brief update. I put a flyer. I'm going to try to be quick, because I know it's been a long afternoon. Y'all still got some meetings to go.
Yeah.
Um, a flyer like this here, this is what we're going to put out in the community. This is, um, a part of a text by Gov. It's what they call a smart texting program. Um, and once it's, um, implemented and fully operational, people can opt-in, voters can opt-in. They will get updates on election dates, if they want, uh, early voting dates. If they want to know where their precincts are, they can text without calling the office all the time. Uh, we're going to use it for voters, we're going to use it for poll workers to organize and, uh, get them trained and, and make sure they're assigned to their precincts. Also, we're going to use it for you and candidates, for elected officials. Because I'm, I'm always sending, um, emails and text messages to, to the clerk, reminding y'all when y'all report to do. But this would do, this will, if you want to be signed up for it, you have to opt-in. Um, you will get text messages when your monthly reports or quarterly reports to do or yearly reports to do and different things like this. But it's, it meets our goal as a Board of Elections. We want to increase voter turnout. Historically, Wake County is still low voter turnout on all, pretty much all of our elections. It's, it's, it's improved a little bit, but this will help us educate the voters. Voter education is very important to us. Um, voters will get, uh, notification, like I said, of when voting is, what issues are. If they don't know, it'll give them a link to, to, to find out the issues, just like this year. I put another flyer over here. Uh, most people wondering, what in the world is, uh, this June seventeenth election is all about, Public Service Commission? So we have a, a frequently asked questions about the Public Service Commission for the June seventeenth election, for the July runoff. And so, uh, instead of calling the office and trying to direct them whether to come up there and get it, or, our office, it could, it could direct them to their website, to our website, to where they can download the information and, uh, and get just, uh, updated information on, on the election, anything dealing with election. That's what we want to try to do. We want to give it a two-year run to see how it works. Uh, they're doing it in Glen County now, and they, they raving over it because they said it cuts down a lot of the contacts with the office. People calling us all the time wanting to know, when, when is early voting? When is absentee ballots due? When can we start doing this? When can we start doing that? And so now they can just text it in and say, um, election day. It'll give them a text back and say, election day is June seventeenth from seven to seven to your precinct. Instead of just calling in all the time. And so, uh, we think it's really going to help educate the voters and, um, and hopefully increase our voter turnout. Here to answer the question.
Okay, y'all got any questions? I just commend them for doing it on a holiday.
Yeah.
Commended for doing what now?
On a holiday.
What holiday is that?
Juneteenth.
All right, that's the seventeenth, he said.
Oh, okay, 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 the election. We have no control over that, but we, we're going to, whatever, whatever date the state decides, that's when we're going to vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's not quick.
Anybody got any questions? No? Thank you. Carry it over.
Last month, when we were at ACCP conference in Savannah, um, the Secretary of State, Brad, uh, what's his name? Brad, I never can say it. Um, I went by his booth. He was actually there. And when he saw my tag, because you have a county that's written very big, he said, where? He, he knew immediately where I was from and said, you have great leadership in your election. So he was complimenting Mr. Nelson here on how well the elections are run in Wake County. So, for the Secretary of State himself to automatically recognize the county I was from and know that spoke volumes. So I let Mr. Nelson know, so I wanted you guys to know while he was here, the Secretary of State recognizes how well, well, how well the elections are run here, so.
Great job.
I credit the board. They might need to get some luxury in that door now.
We credit you. We credit you.
Good job.
Well, they were smart enough to hire me.
I want to get a laugh out of you.
They're tired. They're tired.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Collins. All right, any questions on it? Discussion anymore? No, we carry it over. All right, the twenty-twenty-five GDOT SAP Safety Action Plan Grant. That's for, uh,
Stripe.
They're going to give us a grant for, for striping and stuff like that.
Yes, sir. This is a, 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 um, branch of the LMIG to, uh, apply for a grant for two-hundred-ninety-one thousand. There's a ten percent match, um, for striping or reflectors or signage. Um, so, but it has to be, the majority of the work has to be on the roads that they submitted, um, from DOT. So what I'm asking from, from the board is to give me some directions on which roads they want, or, um, I'll pick some roads and, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so, now the list of roads that we have in here, do we have to pick from this list of roads, uh?
He said the majority has to, needs to come from this here.
Majority has to come from this.
Needs to come from this, is what he said, yes.
Okay.
And this can be for your signage, like, um, if you have some dark intersections that's not state routes, uh, we could use the, uh, you know, you could use the solar, um, light stop signs or, or, uh, you know, stop ahead signs. And it can be signage, it can be, well, it's in the, the, that letter.
Yeah.
Um, pavement markers, it can be striping. Um, and so you can install, you can use it for guardrails, minor shoulder widening if you need that, need that. Um, so, but I know, I've got a complaint for, uh, a wadley road to, uh, that the striping is about invisible, or invisible on that road, so.
Right. We got some roads, this is not, money's not going to go very far. But it's going to come in good because we do have some roads that need to be in some areas around close to town that, that need stop bars and, and white lines, and some of them, some of them need some striping. So we just pick the ones that we need worst around, is what me and James talked about.
Yes, sir, and, you know, the, the rush on this is the, uh, due date, which is May twenty-ninth.
Yeah. So you got to get it done. Okay.
Make sure Haywood and Dixie Union Road's on there, because I get called there four times a day with no signs.
Okay.
And that's a stop ahead sign?
Stop ahead sign, yep.
Y'all got any more roads, anybody that's got any that they need to tell him about?
Yeah, I, I have, but I get with them, they don't, the ones I have.
We got, we got till when? May the?
Well, I have to have the application submitted by May twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it's got to be done right away.
Um.
Let him know at least tomorrow, next day, and a day or two, we need to let him know what we want. Okay. All right, anymore? No, we carry it over. I'd approve the purchase of four quick turn three-sixty target boxes. Them for, uh.
That's for the shooting range?
But shoot, shoot range, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
We got anybody up there?
Mr. Von Ado right there.
Mr. Von Ado, he come up here.
I don't know if we need to listen to this fellow.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you real quick this afternoon. Uh, these are four quick turn boxes, as you said, Mr. Chairman. Give you a quick history. I know we got to, to move on. Our range was built in twenty-nineteen, and there are twenty lanes there with two boxes per lane. We have forty tiny boxes. What these boxes allow the officer to do when they come up to qualify, train, or whatever, depending on what type of training they're in, that target is turned sideways. And the range master controls all forty targets from a computer behind the shooters. You may have a target up there that has a child with a backpack on. Right next to it in your lane may be the guy standing there with a pistol or machine gun. And when that target turns, you have to make that split second decision, which target do I shoot? That's what these machines allow us to do on the ranges. Uh, we are a state-of-the-art range, as I said. We need to keep these up and going. Up until this year, the manager and I got together, first of the year, we did not have a maintenance plan in place since the place was built. I think there've been a few changes here or there, some service here or there, but we never had a service contract. Then we do have in place now, our service contract covers us for a yearly basis. The company comes in, we had our, our inspection was done the, uh, third of last month, and we had ten of our machines not functioning properly. We, we can't hold training on the grounds if we don't have all of our equipment working like it should. Out of the ten that were not functioning, they've got six of them that they are in the process of repairing for us now. The four that are not repairable, two of them had over four inches of water in them. Simply that's a lack of maintenance and, and being down there and using the equipment on a regular basis, making sure that everything's up and running like it should. Uh, we, we are taking care of that on a weekly basis now, based on the recommendation of Inver- uh, Invers. Um, the four machines that you have in front of you will replace those four that, that were not repairable. We have cannibalized those and took all the parts out of them for any of our other machines that, that we can fix on our own. Uh, Invers is a company, this is all this company does. They build the backstops, they build the turners, they do indoor ranges, outdoor ranges and everything. So it is a proprietary thing. That's why you have only, only the one price in front of you instead of it being a bid thing. The, their service has been outstanding so far. Their technician spent an entire day with me going through all forty machines, going through our computer, making sure everything was up to snuff. We qualified ESP in the last weeks. We qualified ESO last week. Wake Cross PD's qualifying this week with us, with the equipment that we currently have. We're, we're limited on the number of folks that we can put on the line because we're missing those ten machines. If we get those six back, we get these four in place, then we can actually qualify twenty shooters at one time.
Okay.
And, and that price does include the installation, everything that goes with it. They have a turnaround date on that for us. Uh, we do have a warranty on them. I believe it's a ninety-day warranty of all the parts and everything within them. And again, they have been outstanding with their customer service. Uh, they have a twenty-four-hour hotline that if we have a problem, I call the guy, I tell him what it, what it's doing. Some of the things I can fix. If I can't, they can have somebody here within a day. Um, it's a local, it's a local Georgia company, not a local Wake Cross company, but they are out of Swanee, Georgia. So their guy can be here within about three and a half hours and, and do what he's got to do.
Okay. You recommend this, then?
Absolutely, absolutely. It, it gets us back up to, back up to the standard. And, uh, like I said, we, we've got folks using our range from, from all over now. Um, and just, it's, it's, uh, it's been a learning curve for me. Been in the fire service for thirty years, and in five months, I've learned more about range safety and, and the things that our officers. and, and the things that our officers go through on a, on a daily basis on that training grounds that I had no clue about.
Okay.
Any questions?
I think you also have the money in your budget.
Yes, sir. It's coming out of my budget this year. Uh, because of the, uh, the position being vacant for a period of time, there is money in the budget to cover it.
Okay.
Does the county have to keep this up on our own, or does the city put in to...
My, my overall budget is a 60-40 split, city-county, so we will recoup the 40s.
I didn't know how that worked, I was just wondering.
Yes, sir.
But now other counties, if they come in, and other, um, agencies, if they come in to use the range, that...
There's a... There, there is a schedule fee that's, that's in place. We, uh, we are actually currently working on that schedule fee to, uh, to make sure that everything is as it should be. One of the reasons I really want to get this range back to where it's supposed to be is, is we can offer a public class, ladies handgun safety classes, uh, general handgun safety classes, things of that nature, that, that if the range is not working properly, we can't offer those classes to the public. There is a fee for the public to do them. The one class that I've already been a part of, like I said, I've learned something every time. I'm, I'm at the range and I'm constantly getting folks, ladies in general, that go, my husband bought a gun for Christmas and I had no clue how to shoot it. We've got instructors that are willing to come and teach with us and, and use that range. Number one, it gets folks out there to see what we have, to see what our officers are training on. At the same time, they're getting the training in the handgun safety, that that gun's not your enemy. It's the person on the other end of it.
Yeah.
Now, we don't charge like the state patrol, the GBR, anybody like that.
State patrol, state patrol is actually giving us eight instructors every time we host a, a firearms class.
Okay.
They're gonna provide the instructors for us, that was kind of a trade-off with them. We will actually recoup more money doing the handgun safety classes than what we would have by charging them per day. And I would rather see more folks come through the gate and be trained properly on a handgun than I had to see those guys go somewhere else.
Right. And since we brought that topic up, uh, I know last week we had a little try on time with one of our GSPs. I think everybody here has heard a little bit about it or haven't. But I immediately fell on my knees and started praying for him because I didn't know how long he was underwater. But it was quite a scary moment for him and his close friends, and especially his family.
Yes.
And you know, I don't know if y'all know what I'm talking about, but...
That's on Swamp Road.
Swamp Road, uh, Justin Jones, Trooper Jones got in a chase. The vehicles intertwined with each other, the trooper car went off the road, went upside down, and he was underwater. Nobody knew how long he was underwater, that's the reason they lifelighted him, was just to take precaution because he was actually talking to them. They done CPR on him for I don't know how long, but he was actually talking when they rolled him in the back of that ambulance.
Yes.
So anytime, you know, that, they call it that thin blue line, which I walked it, you've walked it, several of us in here have walked it, but that is a stressful situation, to say the least. And I'm just glad Justin's still with us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Any more questions on it? Any more discussion on it? Carry it over.
Not on that, carry it over.
Carry it over. All right. How many minutes do you, I want to, what's the journey I need to go to? 10 minutes, huh?
I don't need to mention a few things, because I've had several phone calls, um... You gonna do that at the end of the regular meeting, though, right?
You want to get out of this?
We're in a, we're in a work session.
You want to get out of this work session? I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Don't move this there. Got a motion in a second, all in favor. Let's take 10 minutes and come back to here, okay?
Let's call this meeting order. This is a Ware County Board of Commission Public Hearing, rezoning request, Ware County, Wacona Heights, Wacona Heights, Phase Three. Okay? James, you want to tell us about that? What is that?
Yes, this is a request by Mr. Wright to rezone a portion of land from R ninety residential, single family, multifamily to R nine, excuse me, R forty-five residential, senior family or multifamily. And the R forty-five is a lower or smaller setbacks, basically zero lot line development. Um, R ninety requires ten-foot side setbacks. R forty-five would be a zero foot setback on the, on the interior lot line that spread or that goes to the middle of the residences. And then, um, where they are not zero, they're from, uh, I think three to six feet side setback on those. When they join another district, it's a twelve-foot side setback and then the rear setback is reduced. The planning commission heard this request and recommended approval of the rezoning. And then you can see attached to the staff or in the staff report, there's adjacent surrounding zoning and land use. To the north is Wacona Drive and then Ware County Board of Education and Wacona Elementary School and the bus barn. To the south is residences, R ninety, um, and then commercial along State Street. And then east is commercial, C two, um, along Eighth Street, um, State Street, and then the railroad. And then across the railroads, residences in R ninety and RS and A one agricultural. And to the west is residences, R ninety and electric substation, A agriculture to west of Park Avenue.
Okay.
I think in your packet, you have a, um, a printout and also the adopted rezoning standards are part of your standard for as well.
Okay. Yeah, he's up here with the zoning.
So, and that's what I just, just described was the, uh, the area in blue is the rezoning request.
Okay.
And the yellow is R ninety zoning and the red is C two highway commercial.
Now, which one are you talking about now? Which one are you talking about? This is the one from Mr. Wright?
Yes, from Mr. Wright, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And that in the blue is what he's requesting to be rezoned. And the R forty-five, it's been in the zoning district, the zoning resolution for a long time. It's just never been used. It's a zero lot line development, basically for townhomes, um, really. And, um, and they can be for sale or rental. So, and I think Mr. Wright has given you a, um, packet showing a rendering of what he's proposing. Uh, with the exception that the, uh, the cul-de-sac on that rendering shows the cul-de-sac going all the way to Wacona, that's going to be shortened. You don't want the cul-de-sac to go to Wacona because all you're going to do is collect the school traffic in the mornings.
Right.
So they'll put, um, buildings along that, along Wacona Drive facing the interior side. And then Mr. Wright's here, if you, if you have any questions for him.
And just to give you a better idea, this is an aerial photo from January that basically shows you what it looks like. So it's the area right behind Dollar General, you got Wacona over here. You got the substation back here, so, and, uh, Wacona Heights subdivision behind it as well. So this acts as a good buffer between the commercial in front of it to the east, uh, and the residential, single family to the west, uh, so.
And Mr. Chairman, I, uh, yeah, I rode out to the site like I usually try to do, go visit, you know, for the darn rezoning. And I think it's a, it's a wonderful, uh, concept out there, uh. And they're gonna have a street, I mean, they done their homework, they're gonna put it, they're gonna put that street in there. Also, like I say, have a cul-de-sac in there. And, uh, the back of these townhouses, I guess, would be basically like one to the back of what, Dollar General? And the other one toward the other residential properties over there.
So it'd be facing towards the street in the center.
And, uh, my understanding is these are not real, these will be owner occupied.
That's what I'm saying is that the plan is to sell these.
Sell them. And I think the only thing that we have even pretty much just like it in the city, in the whole county, is over there by the Hazard Hill Cemetery. Those, uh, I can't think of the name of those apartments.
Saint Mary's.
Saint Mary's. And they, they are, these people they buy there, yeah. And they're, and the people they own them, you know? And, uh, so I don't know what kind of price they have on them. I might get one of those, you know, get money on all these taxes and stuff. But, but it is, I think it's a nice concept and, uh, I applaud them for it, you know? And, uh, right now it's just sitting there vacant and they built a lot of homes around there now. But now, I remember when they started that subdivision out there. And so this will be something that will be different and unique and, uh, a lot of people, they don't want all this land and all this stuff. They just want a nice place and then, you know, they can move on, you know?
Yes, sir. And like James had said, the little packet that we gave y'all up there, that was, uh, something the developer's had handed over, just to save some time. Go ahead and let y'all see sort of an idea of what they plan on putting out there.
Okay.
Uh, if you have any questions, uh, we've also got the developer here, if you have any questions for him.
Anybody got any questions for?
Uh, zoning committee. I just getting, like I said, I applaud them for this and, uh, I think it'd be a welcome, you know, addition out there.
Okay. You say the developer is here?
Yes. Uh, Deidre Wright.
Mr. Wright? Nice to meet you, sir. Do we have anybody that, again, anybody that opposes this thing? Do we have anybody that opposes?
Anybody who wants to speak?
Anybody?
Oppose the rezoning request? Not for it?
Nobody's for it, okay? All right? We will, uh.
We'll go to the call.
We'll go to Boogie, if you don't mind.
Hi, I'm, uh, Dale Mackey. I stay in the, uh, subdivision and my only concern, uh, councilman, so.
Okay.
Is the traffic coming back in. I know y'all said, uh, the other way was going towards the school, but coming the other way is going back towards my place. Cause my house is in front of the street and that's going to put a lot of traffic on my side versus the opposite side. I mean, even if you still come out the opposite side, you still make that right turn and go wherever you gotta go versus coming back to the inside.
John, can you show us what he's talking about?
So based on what you're asking, instead of having, instead of having it dead end right there at Wacona, open it up to Wacona.
And then cul-de-sac the other end.
Correct.
Don't let it go to Sierra.
Correct.
That's what he's, I think that's what you're saying.
Okay.
Reverse the cul-de-sac.
And then another thing too, when you look at those two houses there on that corner, both of those houses right there got a privacy fence up and they've been up and out for a while, which would create a blind spot for those cars coming in and out of that particular area when you look at it.
So your, your proposal is something that's a lot safer than?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so make sure I'm understanding, instead of right now with the Sierra, that's the street you stay on?
Correct.
Okay. Instead of letting that be the entry point, you're saying that have the entry point be on the other end and the cul-de-sac on the Sierra side?
Correct.
Okay. And so other words, as far as the, the concept and the, uh, development itself, you don't have a problem with that?
No, no, my only concern was the traffic coming back in, cause you, you already got all these houses in there now. Then you gonna put these townhouses in there, which is going to create more traffic coming in and out. And everybody, just about everybody's side of that subdivision works and gets up and goes to work.
Okay.
So it's gonna create more traffic, more of a traffic jam in there. And then let's just say, so each is own, if somebody's drinking one night and come on out and miss that, miss that stop sign, who would say they won't come in my yard, come inside my neighbor yard, hit the light pole, then I'm out of power. I mean, lock that right there.
Did you like the work?
Bad spot.
Okay. I guess, so you suggesting that we make that correction?
Correct. Yes, it just puts cul-de-sac on my side, on my side, on Sierra side and leave the other side open towards the school.
Can you do that?
Just flip flop.
John? Can we do that?
As a condition to the zoning?
Yeah. Well, it wouldn't be conditioned to zoning, it would just be conditioned to the?
Entry, ingress, egress.
I mean, as far as, as far as our end goes, uh, we don't believe there would be that much of a significant increase in traffic for that area, uh, probably no more than you would see from the rest of, uh, Wacona Heights driving through there. As far as the issue of the stop sign and the fences there, uh, the actual intersection is a good ways down. You can sort of see it on the aerial photo there that, uh, they're a good ways back from that actual intersection.
I mean, you could blow it up. Hey, uh, before you, can you take those red lines off?
Yeah, that's awesome.
And zone. See those two fences off right there?
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're a good little ways back from that intersection. So I mean, they should have a good visibility to their left of the road.
And not only, I mean, not only that, I mean, you, I know what you're saying, but what if those two houses there got company and they got cars brought up front in that driveway? I mean, that's still gonna hand up visibility. I mean, that's something you gotta think about too. Cause they do have family, they do have people that come over and visit, which create another problem. I mean, that's cars, trucks. And like, this is Lenisha, she may have family over, they may park on the side of the street. Then you got another problem from right there. Not only that, say if I got company and they park on the side of the street, then next race, another problem for them coming out. Now they gotta cross the lane. If you got two cars coming, then you got another issue there.
But as far as the, as far as the zoning request?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I just, I just wanna flip flop.
You just, you, you just wanting to have a conversation about how, how it's laid out?
Correct.
And these are just, Mr. Wright, these are just conceptual. Right, yeah. So, so let me ask you this, is, is that gonna pose you an issue if you flip flop the road?
No, the, the, the main purpose of installing the cul-de-sac was not?
If you could come up.
Chairman, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm deep, right? But the main purpose of installing the cul-de-sac was not to make it a through road, so the Wacona traffic from coming from the school wasn't going to be able to take the path of least resistance and just?
Directly come through.
So that was the main purpose of having that cul-de-sac, so we didn't create extra traffic coming through there, coming from the school.
So right now, if it, what's, what was the gentleman's name, Mr.?
Dale, I'm Dale.
Dale.
Mike, okay. So based on what he's saying, if you just flipped and say, okay, have a cul-de-sac on
Sierra side.
Sierra side. You come in, the people that stay in those townhouses, they would just come in from that way and then go back out that way?
Correct.
Okay.
That's definitely a possibility and we can do some posting to let them know that this is a closed road, you know, so that people from that Wacona side would try?
Wouldn't try to go down there and?
Right.
Get stuck at a?
Right.
Cul-de-sac.
Okay.
But either way, I mean, that's not gonna pose you a huge issue?
No.
And you're cool with the zoning request?
Correct.
Cool.
Gotcha. Thank y'all. Okay.
And Mr. Wright, as, this same thing as Commissioner Verst said, I, I like the, I like the idea. Um, I, I think housing being a premium around, we need to do some things in certain areas to make sure that we can get more houses per lot. Uh, you know, I mean, I, I think as far as zoning goes, there are a lot of other counties in the state that, uh, have already gone to similar zoning, uh, you know, like this, especially once you get above, above the Macon Dixon line, you know, you get a lot more like that. So I, 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 I've been talking about this, that we've been having, we've been needing to use this kind of zoning for, for a pretty good while now. So good on you.
And, and you know, another thing, just like you were saying, for the most part, the people that's coming in there are the people that live, live there. It's not like, you know, you just got people gonna be joyriding and coming, you know, they do the, they have to turn around and come back out. So I think that's what I'm looking at and Mr. Mike Paul, you brings up a valid point about coming out that way and in that way, ingress and egress versus if you put the cul-de-sac on his end, you still be coming in there, you just be coming in from a different way.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay. Any more discussion on that?
Only, only thing I would like to know from Mr. Wright, if you have to have fencing put up, who's the company gonna put up the fence?
Oh, Red Fence.
You wouldn't happen to know?
Yeah, I'd get it out of town. Yeah. I couldn't resist that.
Don't be, Mr. Charles.
That's all right.
Should've got temper up for the talk we did.
Alright, any more? Any, anybody else oppose it? If not, we'll carry it over. Okay. Okay, we got another rezoning, haven't we?
Yes.
Res zoning request for nineteen eighty-one State Street. Come up and tell us about this.
Alright, uh, so basically this is a request from Donnie Carter Jr. Uh, they're interested in potentially locating or relocating their business at this, uh, this piece of property. Uh, it's located about three hundred and ten foot south of the intersection of West Waring and Kirkland Street. Uh, so you got Waring Street up here, State Street. It's got a little bit of an old right of way that comes in off of State Street. So they're looking at these two pieces of property right here. Uh, it's approximately point two for this small one up here and point eight acres for this back piece. And they are looking to rezone it from R seventy-five to C three general commercial. Uh, C three, that's the same kind of commercial that we have to the north of it. So we're just trying to follow a sweep with that. To the north of it, like I said, you have some commercial, you got some residential up here. Uh, to the west, you've got industrial, uh, scrubs company, you got a little bit of agriculture further back and residential. Uh, a little bit further back, uh, to the east of it, you got C three, uh, you got some residences off on the other side of State Street. You also have a little apartment right here in front of it, but sort of grandfathered in with that C three zoning. Uh, and to the south of it, you've got R seventy-five and C three, so residential, residences and commercial. As far as the major street plan, it's uh, on US one, that's Major Arterial Street. Uh, it also would have access to Kirkland if they want to use that as rear access for their service vehicles or whatnot. As far as character area for that, it's designated as urban fringe. So that kind of commercial suburban type development, commercial residential, it would fit right in there. Uh, for the most part, site's pretty flat. Uh, on the eastern half of the property was slight slope downward uh, towards the west. As far as uh, potential for development, uh, it could be used for residential purposes. Uh, with its current existing zoning, uh, the planning commission, they met back in uh, April, I believe it's April tenth. Uh, yeah, April tenth, and they voted unanimously to approve it, uh, and sent it on up here. Uh, as far as our adopted Ware County zoning standards, uh, we've got a copy of that attached there as well. Just a quick run through, for this proposed amendment would uh, permit a use that's suitable in view of the use and development of the adjacent nearby properties? Yes, because the property is adjacent to the C three commercial zoning and commercial properties. Second one, the proposed amendment would adversely affect the existing use or usability of the adjacent or nearby properties? No, uh, this is already adjacent to commercial and industrial zone properties. So any residential in the area, we've already been affected by those beforehand. Uh, wouldn't expect any, anything bad from that in any ways. Uh, property is to be affected, hang, the property to be affected by the proposed amendment has a reasonable economic uses currently zoned. As I said before, uh, yes, it could be used for residential purposes. Uh, the proposed amendment would result in a use which would or could use excessive or burdensome use to existing streets? No, as I said, it's on a major highway, US one, it'll have rear access to Kirkland Street, uh, if they want to use that for rear access. Uh, the proposed amendment is in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan. However, nothing herein shall prevent a zoning decision which is not in conformity with the policy and intent of such land use plan. But yes, as I said, it's uh, designated as urban fringe, that's a suburban type development uh, to the north and east of Waycross. Uh, and that includes commercial and residential uses. As far as uh, other existing or changing conditions that affects the use and development of the property, which gives hoarding grounds for either approval or disapproval of the pro- proposed amendment? No, didn't have anything else to stand in there against it, so.
Alright, just.
If you have any questions, it's not?
Anybody got any questions on it?
Nope. And this, the uh, car electric that's down there now, further right down the street?
Mm-hmm.
So they relocating, I guess because of overpass and all?
Uh, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
I can now. Okay. Alright. We, do you have anybody uh, oppose this? Res zoning. Anybody? Okay. Nobody opposed it? We'll carry it over. We need to get out of this uh, hearing. Now here, motion to get out of the hearing.
Motion that we adjourn from the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Ah, nah.
Okay. Come out of the hearing, and we're gonna go into the regular. Board of Commission meeting. On Monday, May the twelfth. Okay. We ain't gonna take no time out, we're gonna go ahead and change over. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting order. I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call while we start it. Mr. Burris?
President.
Mr. Timmer?
Here.
Mr. Lucas?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Chair's here. Okay. We done did our prayers and the prayers, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved chair?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Ah.
Okay. Now we have an employee of the month. Who is that? Miss, Teresa, would you come up, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, employee of the month for May two thousand twenty-five is Miss Cynthia Mason, clerk at magistrate court. You wanna come up? So we can all look at you while I talk good things about you? So Miss Cynthia was hired September twentieth, she was actually, we hired her to magistrate court September twenty twenty-two. And she was nominated by Magistrate Judge Charles Brown. And he says since Cynthia has been with magistrate court, she has excelled in her duties. She's the clerk for pre-warrant hearings on every Tuesday morning. She prepares the calendar, makes sure he has all the necessary paperwork and material for each court proceeding. She has duties to also process civil claims, dispositions, which are evictions, foreclosures and all other civil claims, as well as her other duties as a clerk. She takes the time to make sure everything is completed and completed correctly. Cynthia never complains of all the workload or the responsibilities. So with all those things said, he nominated her and we agreed and selected her as our employee of the month for this month. So if you would all congratulate her, please? If you all don't mind, can y'all just, would you mind if we came back behind you? So if you all, in the future, you want to get up, we're gonna come back there.
We just squeeze in?
A little screwed up, close together?
You want us to stay seated?
Like we like each other?
Let's get all nice and kind of.
Yeah, man.
Judge Brown, you wanna come up?
I just, I just wanna copy all of these.
Ready?
Three, two, one.
How to get one more? Huh, three, two, one. Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, we got to guess, figured we done got them out of the way, so we're gonna move on to the agenda. We got, uh?
This Eric Stenbridge Library.
Yeah, the lib, we're gonna go to the library now? We got the uh, update on the library.
I know this really quick.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, uh, my name is Erica Stenbridge. I'm the library director for the Fenwick Regional Library System. I know I've already given a couple of updates this year about our renovation project, but I just wanna give a really brief update today. We're still right on track according to the timeline. The bids were open on April the thirtieth at the library. And then we had a library board meeting the very next day on May the first. The bid went to craft development. We're still working on the paperwork for this, including the contract. As soon as we get that worked out, then we should be able to proceed maybe toward the end of the month. In addition to working on our renovation project, we've also been working on our budget. Um, and I know this budgets are always hard. I have handed, or Miss Brooks has handed you the budget for the Waycross Ware County Public Library. We voted and approved this budget on May the first, at, at the May the first meeting also. We're projected to use, as you can see on the second page in yellow, we're projected to use twenty-one, one thirty-three oh nine from our fund balance. And this unfortunately also includes um, cutting staff hours. I just wanted to explain a little bit why we're having to use this. Several factors have caused us to have increased costs. Our state health benefit plan has gone up for our employees. At the Ware Library, we're projected to spend a little over thirteen thousand more for this fiscal year twenty-six than we did fiscal year twenty-five. In addition to that, one of our libraries last year left our system. So that caused our state funding to go down because we lost the population of about twenty thousand people. So we lost that funding. And then finally, and this is also on the budget, just our cost of operations have gone up. As you can see on the electricity on the back page, in FY twenty-four, we were using around fifty thousand. And we're projected to use probably close to sixty thousand for FY twenty-six. So, all in all, our costs have definitely gone up. I would like to request up to a ten percent increase, um, anything we would appreciate, just to help our cause.
You have any discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, you know, um, appreciate what Miss Steinbridge, Steinbridge?
Steinbridge.
Steinbridge is doing, you know, at the library and uh, I hope that the um, renovations and the thing that they're gonna add to it. And also just some general stuff to surround that, the trees and stuff like that, kind of be trimmed back. And I think I talked to manager about that, will enhance the library even more. And uh, like I said, I know the cost of everything is going up and uh, like I say, one library pulled out, so, you know? But anyway, uh, I think that's something we have to just look at when we get to our budget with the manager, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Can't make any promises, but.
Oh, I know. I just wanted to bring it up, just to kind of explain why we had that, we had requested that increase.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay.
Are you a recommendation on that? Like you said, we just have to look at that when we get to the budget, that more information.
So, so we'll, we'll look at that when um, when we do our budget and Beverly's uh, working on those now. She may have sent it out to the um, to the different departments, um, I'm not sure. But we're looking maybe to meet with the commission, um, the first week in June, I think, to have the staff present their budget to the commission. I just gotta get which day is a Tuesday or Thursday or Wednesday, which day's better for you guys?
Okay. How is that renovation coming over there?
It's coming, they, they've um, they went out for bids, the bids have came back, they, they awarded the bid. And now they're just getting the contracts ready and get them signed and getting the um, bonds, if they have that bonds.
Alright. Alright, let's uh, carry it over to. Let's go on to the agenda items and appointment for the Ware County Board of Elections.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Post one, which is occupied by Mr. Doc, uh, Dr. Rodney Brown expires at the end of June. And um, they've spoken with Mr. Brown, or Dr. Brown, and he's requ, or he's um, expressed that he has no desire to be reappointed to the board. So the Republican Party has submitted three names for that position, and those names are Andrew Preston, Grayson Grob Smith and Karen Woodard. And then also, I've received a um, a letter from Miss Elizabeth Pond requesting to be considered as a uh, board member.
Do we get any paperwork on her?
Just that letter's all I got.
So.
Yes, sir. And then in your packet, you have the resume, the application, the resume from the uh, other three members that were submitted.
I think she also submitted a resume to this, here, Mrs. uh, Pond.
Pond, um.
Yeah, uh, is there a res, uh, there's not a resume in here on the ground? You have one?
All I received from uh, Miss Pond was a letter.
Okay, just a letter.
Yeah. We had another name that was submitted, but she withdrew, which was Miss Harriet Hall. And she submitted a resume, but then she withdrew her name, so it's not included.
Okay. Are you a motion that we?
I make a motion on that post one, since we got two openings on post one, I, I nominate Mr. Andy Preston for post one.
Andy Preston, okay.
Would you like them to come up and talk? You want them to come up and talk and?
Let's, okay, you wanna hear from him?
Would y'all like to hear from him?
Probably need to get a second on before we get to discussion.
Let's uh, you got a motion for?
I made the motion for it.
I'll second that.
They got a motion and a second.
Now, we can get some stuff on.
Now, do we have some discussion on it? Would he come up?
Mr. Preston, would you come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Andy Preston, uh, I'm a resident at eight oh five Griffith Circle, Waycross, Georgia. I've lived here for thirty-seven years, uh, retired last year in forty years of teaching, and, uh, looking for other avenues to be of service to, to the community. And since my background is social studies, and I did a lot of things related to elections and mob trials and things of that sort, uh, this was something that I found very interesting, uh, whenever our budget was available. I'm excited to answer any questions, or try to.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for him?
No questions.
Thank you, Ms. Preston.
How do we do that for, we voted on, and then we don't, is that, didn't we do it like that before?
Sir?
We asked for votes.
You, you would ask for a vote for that candidate?
Candidate, and then we move on to that, ain't that the way we did it before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did we get the other?
The other ones are here, if you would like to hear from, from those candidates as well.
I, I would like to hear from them, if you can.
Would like to hear from the other ones too?
Yes.
The other candidates, okay. The other ones is, uh, let's see, Ms. Woodard?
Ms. Karen Woodard and...
Yeah.
Mr. Grub Smith.
My name's Karen Woodard, got a little issues here. Uh, I've lived in Waycross for about fifty years, uh, I'm retired postmaster. I've worked for the elections office as a poll watcher for several years, and last year I began working as a poll worker. I've worked, uh, early election and election day, and I feel like I'm qualified for this position.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Woodard. Okay, uh, let's see, you've got another one?
Mr. Grub Smith.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mistress, thank y'all for, uh, giving us a few minutes to speak. Uh, my name is Grayson Grob Smith, I have lived in Ware County my whole life, not that I've lived a whole lot of life, I'm still kinda young, but I, you know, I, I've lived here my whole life, and, uh, care a lot about this county, I know there's been a, a few concerns with our board of elections, the integrity of it in the past, and I think that our board of elections has done a good job at trying to resolve those issues as best they can. I think that I could bring a little bit more, you know, clarity and transparency, as much transparency as, is appropriate. You know, I know there's a certain amount of transparency that you shouldn't, shouldn't always go into when it comes to that thing. But I, I think that I could, uh, bring some, some transparency and, and bring some fresh perspective to, to the board of elections. And I do also wanna say that I think that both other nominees are more than qualified to serve. I, I don't think there's any bad decision here with any of them, I think that all of them, uh, including myself, would do a good honorable job. And I appreciate y'all letting me come up here and speak.
I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you, Miss.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Anybody else?
Uh, they got another one. Mr. Elizabeth Pond, is she here?
She's not here.
She's not here.
She's not here.
She's not here, okay.
So how do we do this?
So you have a motion and a second currently on the floor. So you can't, you, procedurally, we need a vote on the motion, or we need the motion withdrawn if, um, but, but the motion is for post one, and then you'll still have the opportunity to vote for post two.
Two, okay.
Okay, but right now with the motion and the second being on the floor, we...
Unless that motion is withdrawn, then we need a vote on that motion.
Right.
Okay.
And right now the motion is, um, for Mr. Preston.
Andy Preston for post one.
How, do you wanna withdraw that, and let's vote for, let everybody vote on, pick their own candidate and see who, how do we... You got, how would we do it? You got to have...
So you have, you have, uh, two posts to fill, right? And so we're gonna take a, um, a motion to fill one post, and then a motion to fill the second post. So now I believe you've heard from all the candidates that are present, um, and so you're ready to take a motion, you know, to fill those posts. You do have a motion and a second, uh, for Mr. Preston already on the floor for post one. So we are ready for a vote on that post if the commission is ready to vote.
I'm ready.
Okay, are y'all ready to vote?
I'm ready.
As these...
For post one.
If the motion has been, we got a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's vote on it.
So for clarity, this is a motion to appoint Andy Preston to post one.
Right.
For post one, okay. Y'all know what we voted for, Preston for post one.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna ask individually. Alright. Mr., let me see, where's this? See that up here? Mr. Burst?
Yo.
Mr. Tindall?
Yes.
And Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
No.
No. And the chair of vote, yes. Okay. And Mr. Preston, we have three votes.
Correct, so Mr. Preston will be for post one, and now we need a, uh, to address post two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a, uh, motion that we...
Before we move to post two, we've heard from the three for post one, but Mr. Chamberlain's is still here to, uh, come, he's, he's sitting in post two to, uh, actually state his desire to, um...
Well, actually, I mean, if it's okay, my motion was to keep it the same and, and allow Mr. Chamberlain to remain in that position. So my, my, my move would be to...
Keep them in there to re- re- reappoint him.
To reappoint Mr. Vernon Chamberlain to the post two.
And I would second that motion, okay.
I did, we got a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Chamberlain.
But now if he wants to get up and speak, I mean...
Come on up, Mr. Chamberlain.
I'm Vernon Chamberlain, I've, I've already served on the board of the elections, and I've enjoyed it and attended every meeting, and, um, I look forward to continuing to do it, especially since we've lost the, uh, the, um, vice chairman.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, I've, uh, served as a poll worker, and I've been attorney for forty years, and I think I can do a good job.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright. Let's vote on it, we got a motion and a second. That, okay, Mr. Burst?
Uh.
Mr. Tindall?
Uh.
Mr. Lucas?
Uh.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Chair vote, uh. Okay. We got them both to appointing, okay? Let's go to see bid award for the lawn maintenance for the Ware County property.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, uh, let's see, where, how you getting named there? What's his name? For Southeast Lawn Pro, I know it is a little more expensive, but he's, he's local, he lives in Ware County. We've yet, we've had him doing the job for four years alre- I believe it's four years already. And there's been no complaint, no grip, no, nothing that I've heard of coming from him. So I would make a motion that Southeast Lawn Pro continue on with what they started four years ago.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, um, I understand and I appreciate Southeast Lawn Service, uh, they haven't had any complaints. But I wrestle with this thing, I've talked with the manager, and, you know, for me to vote to award this contract to them, and even though we allow, make allowances for the amount, you know, local preference and all this, I just can't really vote to do this because we're talking about another, I think, fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars or more per year for this same service. And I, one other question I wanna have is, you know, I went back and to with you about this, about everything, how can they basically do it and all this? How long would this contract be for?
It's a, it's a one year. It's a one year contract, and it renews for optional three, I believe.
So it's good for one year?
With option to go three.
Yes, sir, for additional renewal, three, I believe, it's how it's written.
And you say you check, but the references on all this other company, they got like, what, I guess, five star, that's the big thing.
Their references are all good, yes, sir.
They're all good, and, uh, the recommendation from the manager is to go with the lowest bid, right?
Correct.
And I know we have in the club, we have the lowest or the best bid, and, uh, in this case, uh, the lowest is, based on what you're telling me, is the best.
There was no negative, um...
Right.
I love it, they've never cut no grass in Ware County that we can tell of. Our grass might be different than other thirty that he does.
My only concern is them having to come all the way from Valosta, how can they do it so much cheaper than what this man already knows what it's gonna take to do it, you know?
That's, that's why I asked the question, Mr. Commissioner Carson, I, same thing, and only thing we know is if we get here, hopefully, they live up to their word and do what they say they gonna do, and, uh, I've talked with the gentleman, pretty much explained to him, you know, and I think they are understanding, so it's a hard decision, and definitely I would love to keep it right here local, and he's been doing the job, but now we're at a point now where we send it out for bids. And as the attorney alluded to, even with the local person, we still talking about what, thirty-seven percent more to pay for this service. And I just would have a hard time explaining that if somebody came and confronted me about that, you know?
I'm, I'm, uh, kinda like Mr. Burst about this here, I can't, I, I was contracted for forty-seven years, and I was always a low bid, wherever I low bid at, I got the job. I don't, I, I think that you can get sued for such as this, now I know, given it to the, if you don't qualify. And if I was probably thrown out just on account of, I thought it'd be, my lawyer'd probably talk to y'all.
Come on.
Again, gentlemen, just from, you know, from the, the work session, we had a more extensive discussion on this issue, but, but you as a commission, you know, in accordance with your purchasing policy, are trying to determine what is the best bid. That best bid would, um, you know, generally be, uh, you know, the lowest bid, but it must be the best bid from a responsible bidder. So if there was, you know, some finding that, that we had, you know, we can document concern as to, you know, time of responsivenessness, or, you know, um, or quality of work, you know, from, from other jobs, or certainly those sorts of things, um, would be good to be documented if, if they are present.
Yep. And I'm, I'd like to make, county manager, Mr. Chairman, my issue is just like you were saying, um, Madam Counselor. You know, impression is a big thing in society and life, to me, what I've done all my life. This gentleman's here, there was another person here that put in for one of the five, that put in for it. This other person that we're talking about giving to, they walked in that door right now, I wouldn't know who they were. And my thing is, when the, when county manager called his references, and I'm playing devil's advocate here, how do we know he talked to the references? How do we know those were the real people? We know who his real people are because they're right here in Ware County. And, you know, and I'm just, I'm not gonna drive over to Valosta and go look at six or eight yards because somebody's put in for one of our things here that we spend about twelve thousand dollars a year on. You know, it's just, now if we spent twelve million dollars a year on it, I'd drive over to Valosta every morning and every afternoon if I had to. But I just, that's just my thought, my thought alone. I think Commissioner Tindall agrees with me.
Is this gonna be an increase in the budget?
Same price as...
Same price we pay now?
Actually, it's lower because we took airport away.
Took it airport out.
It's actually, it's went down three hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, so it'd be lower than, than what, um...
They went down.
What we, what was last year's budget.
Does this company, the, the lowest company, do they cut any, any places in Waycross, if you know?
Their, none of their references were in Waycross, they were all in, um, Lounds, I believe.
Well, they don't go up here for one.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna say, I, I, that's, that's my biggest concern, is that, you know, for, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars, we're gonna come over here and, and, and do a quality job, you know? And, uh, he's, he's been at basically the same price for the whole time he's had it, at least last year, I know. Um, and so, and he's done a quality job, not had any issues, not had any complaints, maybe if there was, he took care of it. Um, and so, you know, and I know how, how things are with, especially with grass cutting. When it's raining like it is right now, you can't get air to cut grass, so you gotta wait until you get a good day to cut grass, whether, I mean, and it spraying too, you know, or whatever you're gonna be doing, but you gotta wait till it's a good day. And sometimes you, you get a good day late in the afternoon, and I'm just concerned, is somebody gonna come all the way from Valosta at four o'clock in the afternoon to cut around courthouse, or to do whatever? We get a local guy, it's not an issue for him to, to come out and catch up some stuff on the, uh, later in the evenings. And so, you know, um, you know, I, I like keeping stuff local. Uh, I do know there is a significant issue, you know, difference in the, in the bid numbers, um, you know, but, um, I, I just really, I, I feel like we're just gonna get better service, um, from the local vendor.
Well...
Kudos.
Then you're gonna have contractors like, what's it used to go to Waycross, they gonna give it to the local man.
But also, Mr. Chairman, devil's advocate again, you're, if...
These people here might wanna go to Valosta and bid, and then if they get put out, you gotta look at it.
Well, it's just like somebody I spoke with out in the hallway earlier, looking at it realistically, look at the other side of that coin. You say, well, everybody on outside have stopped bidding, well, if we start giving it to people that's not in Ware County, your local people's gonna stop bidding. I mean, do we want all our local people to go bid everywhere else, over in Lounds and Valosta, and everybody that's already got all the money? So, I mean, that's a two-edged sword.
Yeah.
Can't have it one way if you don't have it the other way now.
And, Mr. Chairman...
I say, let's take a vote on it and see where it goes.
Mr. Chairman, I, again, I guess we're still in discussion phase, and, you know, at the end of the day, this is what we're charged with. We got rules and policies that we follow, okay? We put things out for bid, and we're having the bid packet, that the county has the option to accept that the lowest are the best bid. Now, granted, I think he done a wonderful job, but now we're looking at, okay, we, we make allowances for people that's local, what, the five percent local preference, I guess, okay, yeah, so you got that. But you still have this person that bidded on it, that say, hey, they checked the references now, I don't know if anybody, we going double check behind or whatever, we pretty much take the, what we get, the reference, we get on them. So, and I'll be the first to tell, Mr. Corson, if, if this company come in here and they hoodooed us or whatever, I'll tell them, hey, you know, we made a bad mistake here, whatever, you know, or, you know, but as of right now, I'm looking at fourteen thousand dollars a year savings to the taxpayers. Now, I don't know how y'all would handle it, but I'm, I'm be hard pressed to come and try to justify... savings to the tax payer. Now, I don't know how y'all would handle it, but I'm, I'm be hard pressed to come and try to justify how I did that when we were talking about apples to apples.
It'll be hard for you to give a local man fourteen thousand dollars more than you would a man in Val Austin put a roof on your house.
Well, just imagine.
Look at it.
If it.
Just cause he's local.
Man's done done the job four years and ain't done it yet. And my second thing would be this, what, just like Commissioner Burris just said. I mean, I don't know this other guy. I hadn't seen the work that he's done. All I saw was references. That was it. Haven't seen no work he's done here. Haven't seen no work in person. If he comes over here and messes this thing up, should that man fix his mistakes for the price that he's quoted on this paper? That, you gotta look at that aspect of it too now. Cause it won't be his job to go back and fix what somebody else has messed up. Because we wanted to, I mean, I know we do it all the time, but we also bypass it all the time as well. We've done it, bypassed it more times than we've actually done it, and that's go with somebody who's just a little higher. And we're spending the same exact amount. Actually, we're three hundred and fifty dollars a month cheaper going with this man than what we were paying last year because the airport's not on there.
Okay, so I heard a mention about that. Can I explain it? Cause this is first I heard this about the airport not being part of it. Now, when bid packets went out, did, was the airport included in that?
Not this time.
So he, this gentleman doesn't do the airport?
Not anymore.
He did.
Well, he does right now, but starting July one, he will not do it anymore. Airport staff will do it.
So his price.
So his price is gonna be three hundred and fifty dollars less?
No, this price didn't include the airport.
Okay, so.
So we took the airport out before we did the, went out for bids.
So that's really not even a topic of discussion.
He took three hundred and fifty dollars off of what we paid him last year. And what we paid him the year before, and what we paid him the year before. Is that correct? You took three hundred and fifty dollars off twelve months compared to what you paid the last forty-eight?
This starts July one.
So his price still the bid price he gave?
Correct.
And the person in Val Austin, bid price is what they gave?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Let's vote on it.
You got a.
Any more discussion on it?
We got it.
What's the motion?
Well, you got a motion.
What was the, what was the motion for?
Motion for that gentleman with.
Make a mo-, I took, make a.
I make a motion to take Southeast Lawn Pro in the amount of thirty-seven hundred dollars a month to continue doing the job that he's done the past four years, forty-eight months.
Okay, guys.
But there was already motion, but that's, that's seconded the motion.
So that's just, I think he's repeating the motion, repeating the motion, and we already have a second for that motion.
Okay, you, you still second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Let's bid on it.
Bid.
Bid on it. I mean, vote on it.
Bid on it.
Yeah, let's bid on it.
Let me hold Commissioner Burris' wallet and bid on it.
Okay. Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Tindall?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Chair votes up. Okay.
In other words, y'all got it.
Award, yeah, there's three votes for it. Bid award for field maintenance spraying at Tremlinger. Bid spraying at Tremlinger to see what that one is.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we accept the bid of, uh, from Coastal Sports Turf LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per year for the, um, field maintenance, spraying it, trimming it.
Spray in? Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, uh, James, can you explain again, cause we did, we have another, we have a local bidder here and they were a low bidder, but there was an issue with their bid package.
Correct. The, uh, last page, the, uh, agreement to abide by the, uh, contract or the bid package was not signed. And it says on that page, if this page is not signed, it's not, it's incomplete packet.
Right. So, so it states in the, in the package that it disqualifies you if you do not fill out the entire package?
Correct.
Okay. Which is why that one has been, has been disqualified.
Correct.
He's local, he'd been disqualified.
Yes, sir.
Cause he didn't sign this thing.
Yes, sir. Cause he didn't complete the, the bid package.
Had that happen to you. Okay. We got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it.
Now, which one of these is it? Mr. Chairman, is Coastal Greenery the one that's got it right now?
Coastal, oh, I don't know who's got it.
Coastal Sports have it right now.
Turf has it right now.
Coastal Sport, okay.
The same one that's got it is the one that's up for, is the one that didn't dominate.
Okay, all right. I got you.
Coastal Greenery?
I got you.
Coastal Sports.
Yeah, Coastal Sports, Forest Turf LLC.
Yeah, we had a second on that too.
Okay, yeah, we had a second. Got a motion and a second. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
And the chair votes out. Okay. Go to the, uh, bid award for the four post lift for vehicle maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept the four post lift bid for vehicle maintenance in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thirty-five, eight, thirty-one. Okay. We got a second?
Yep, my second.
Second, okay, got a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Wait, do, hold on. Do we have any discussion on it?
We just thought.
No, I thought you.
He done, I'd, I'd ask for a motion in a second.
He got a second, second. Then he called for discussion.
No discussion.
No discussion.
Okay. All right. Now, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes out. Okay. Accept the RFP for debris monitoring during declared disasters.
Mr. Chairman, I move we, uh, accept the, uh, uh, the RFP from Thompson Consulting for the debris monitoring.
Okay, got a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Uh, just, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, just make sure if anybody's tuned in since we've had our work session, that this is for the, uh, disaster planning. Whenever we have a, um, an event such as the Helene hurricane that we had, we have to have someone, a, a, a separate company to come in and monitor the company that's doing the debris cleanup to make sure that all the loads that they have are, um, qualifying loads that we can get reimbursement for. Uh, the amount that we pay this company will also be part of the reimbursement that we get, uh, if we have another event that we use them. So, uh, that's another thing is that with this one in with the actual debris cleanup contract, this is just to, um, put us ahead of the game in the event of a natural disaster such as that. Um, no money changes hands unless they do the job.
Right.
Okay.
Got you.
All right. Any, anything else on it? Now, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes out. All right, now this next one is to bid a, I mean, uh, accept the RFP for debris removal during declared disaster. That, Crowder Gov?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we, uh, accept the RFP for the, uh, debris removal during declared disaster for, in contract with Crowder Gov.
Under the conditions of a new contract, not the way the other ones worded.
I think it pretty much worded pretty much the same way. Oh, it's about the check.
Yeah. You'll wait on the check, then we get one?
Yeah. We can try, but I don't know if that'll work or not.
Let's, let's add that verbiage in there.
That'll be in there when we sign the contract.
We have tried that. That is, um, not possible because FEMA requires that the local government pay it and then it be reimbursed. And it is very difficult for especially smaller counties, you know, when they have a massive amount of damage. Um, I've got one county taking out, you know, loans currently to be able to meet their obligations until they're reimbursed by FEMA. So I, it is a problem, no doubt. Um, but it must be solved on a, a federal level instead of a just contract level.
It sounds like to me the feds don't wanna solve it. We could solve it.
I think, I, I need to join with Trump, or I think me and Trump get rid of that, some of them laws.
Listen, Chairman, I'd like to also add to my motion if I may, uh, because it's part of the, my motion about the, uh, Crowder, Crowder Gov, uh, primary service, and then the second provider would be Herzog Solutions.
Yeah.
LLC, not, you're not related to them, are you, my attorney?
I've already asked.
Uh, no, sir.
Her last name is Herzog, so I just wanna make sure.
Well, she would be married in the end if she was related to them.
Okay. But then I wanna add that to my motion, that there be the secondary service provider for the debris removal in the event of a natural disaster declaration.
Crowder, okay. You got that down like that. Okay. Any discussion on it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, let it be known that, uh, so the, the Herzog Company, even though they're out of, is it Missouri?
Missouri.
That they're out of?
I think it.
I think it's there. So they're out of Missouri. Um, they, they actually use local, um, uh, forestry services to, uh, to manage their, their, um, their jobs in the states, in whichever state they're bidding in. And, um, in the South Georgia area, it is a local timber company that is the, um, point for that company. Uh, it'd be Pierce Timber, um, out of our neighboring county that would be the point company if Herzog is brought in on the secondary.
Yeah.
So we would have someone local to be able to yell at if something goes wrong.
Saint Joseph, Missouri.
Yeah. So anyways, just, just thought it was, uh, interesting to find out that, that we do have somebody, even though it's not a local company, they are gonna be represented by a local company.
Okay.
I'll let you go up on you.
Yeah, or Chad.
Yeah. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any more?
No, we vote.
No, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Lu-, Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes out. All right. Approve the quick clean deed to transfer property to Waycross Weir County Development Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, approve the quick clean deed for the transfer of the sliver of property, I think is how it was worded, uh, to the Waycross Weir County Development Authority.
Okay.
Now, second a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe it was a, um, part of that sliver of property is a, um, is a drainage canal. And part of that drainage canal needs some, uh, from what I understand, needs some significant, um, repair work done on it. That it's, uh, caving in on the, on the bank. And so, um, from what we were told by Jason Rubenbauer, uh, with the Development Authority, that, um, that property will be, um, managed by, or that sliver of property will be, um, maintained by GATX.
GATX.
And they're planning on putting in a, uh, large drainage pipe and then covering over the drainage ditch to allow for better drainage, uh, not having cave-in issues, things like that. And then, um, uh, so, um, that being said, we had talked about having a, um, an easement for canal work if needed. But if they're gonna put a pipe through it, there won't be necessarily a need for
Maintenance.
Maintenance on it. So, um, I would say the only thing we need to do on it is just make sure they put a right-sized pipe in it to handle the estimated flow.
Okay. All right. Any more? Vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair go vote no. Okay. Approve upgrade repairs to the Pebble Hill Fire Station.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I move that we approve the upgrades and repairs needed at the Pebble Hill Fire Station. I think Chief Meadows laid it out sort of clearly exactly what was going on out there. And I believe you've either got a price down here of how much it would cost.
Which one was all used?
And that's six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, that is.
C and T?
C and T Metal Roofs and Construction.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All right. Any discussion on it?
Yes, sir. Um, we had talked in our work session about, um, allowing Chief Meadows to, um, go ahead and get a quote for, uh, getting the roof, the roof replaced, repaired, whatever needs to be done while the gentleman's out there working on the softification, the freshwashing and painting and all the upgrades to, you know, kinda complete the job. So, um, I would like for us to go ahead and not necessarily approve it, but approve the, the, uh, ability for him to go ahead and get the bid that we can look at it to go ahead and finish it out while he's there.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Uh, I feel the mention, I appreciate you bringing that up.
All right. Any more? Anything else on it? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes out. All right. The Board of Elections text my gov software update.
Is there anything?
Motion on that?
We, is there something we need to do on that?
Yeah, um, it's a, uh, three-year.
Huh?
It's, it's three-year renewed annually for, um, four thousand dollars a year. She just approved it.
Okay. I, I didn't know if that was just like a budget item that he was just letting us know that he was doing, or if that's something that we had to prove outside the.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it wasn't budget. It's, it's gotten money for this year, but there's not a budget for it the, the following year. So that's why we brought it before you, is this a three-year deal?
He's got enough to do it this year.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, enough for this year.
But then we'll have to put it in the budget for next year.
Put it in for budget for next year and the year after, yes, sir.
It's going, this is an annual thing?
Yes, sir. It's four thousand dollars annually.
To increase communication and to hopefully, um, increase voter turnout, which I do have to agree with you, voter turnout is horrible. Um, you know, um, you're looking thirty-something percent of the county turns out to vote. That's, uh, that's, that's, that's not real good.
No, it's not.
You know, um, I take pride in being able to vote. And if this is gonna be something to, um, increase that voter turnout, then I, I, I think at least for the year, I mean, we may have to squeeze and find somewhere to find the money next year. We'll just maybe cook Carlos's salary or something, but.
I'm glad Carlos is gone.
But, uh, but no, we're hoping we can find some way to do it next year. But, you know, we, we've got to get, make sure people stay involved with the, um, with, with the government, um, with our local government, with our state government, federal government. And if people don't get out and vote, then, um, you know, it's hard to make changes if you wanna make changes if you don't put, put your vote on the paper. So.
Okay.
So I guess we need a, uh, a motion. So I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion that we approve the, uh, Board of Elections text my gov software update.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it now? More? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes out. All right. Now, approve the purchase of four quick turn three sixty target boxes.
Rifle range in it? Handgun.
That's for, uh, either one.
A rifle or handgun?
Rifle range or training center or whatever it is.
Let's make a motion. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
I know we've talked about this before, but we see on here where the BOE gives their portion, we give our portion. Why, why is the city not involved in this?
The city does. They, they foot forty percent of the bill.
Forty percent. They pay forty.
The BOE's not involved in that. It's just the city. Now, the city may pay a, um, a fee, I mean, the BOE may pay a fee to use the range. But as far as, um, budgeting, the city of Waycross pays forty percent of. but as far as, um, budgeting, the city of Waycross pays forty percent of that budget, and then we pay sixty percent.
Okay. I just wanna make sure they were divvying up their part.
They are.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve the purchase of the four quick turn three hundred sixty degree target boxes.
Second. They got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Tendall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Rezoning Wake on High. Phase three from R ninety to R forty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion that we, uh, accept this rezoning request, uh, for Wake on High Phase Three from R ninety to R forty-five.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Now, we're gonna, discussion.
With Commissioner Burson's, uh, permission, I would like to add that we're gonna flip-flop the cul-de-sac.
Well, yeah, I think that's something they've been working out.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
That's right, that's, that's, we're just zoning, but hopefully, I think, Mr. Wright, you know.
They have to work that out.
Yeah, they'll thank you pretty much and, uh, well, I would.
Right, that'll be before.
This is just a rezoning.
Rezoning right now.
Okay, all right, I got.
Okay. All right, this is just for the rezoning. Any more discussion? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Tendall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now. The rezoning nineteen eighty-one State Street from R seventy-five residential to C three general commercial. I have a motion that we.
I make a motion that we rezoned, uh, nineteen eighty-one State Street from R seventy-five residential to C three general commercial.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? No, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Tendall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Manager comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a quick update, um, Albany Avenue Overpass. They stated they should have the, the, uh, preliminary plans done in November, which that would get us, um, that would give us the ability to start buying right away, um, in November, and, uh, quick up, uh, update, Griffin Road, North McDonald Road, Pascal Road, and Cornelius Road. Um, engineer's been given notice to, uh, um, execute contracts with the, um, contractor, and then Pascal Road and Cornelius Road will be paid out of the second round, twenty twenty-four L-MIG. The short streets in Emerson Park, all those have been designed, um, I'll meet with the engineer on Thursday, and then part of his contract, he will put those out the bid, um, so we'll get a bid back on those, they'll go out the bid. Uh, State Street Overpass, uh, it's due to let in September. Uh, the second round of the twenty twenty-five L-MIG, Dasher Lane, Drive, Palmetto, Drive, Lake Drive, Crystal Street, Bennett Lane, Astoria Road, the, the, um, dirt portion, and Lakeview Drive and Scriven Avenue. Um, they're almost finished in design, those, and then we'll, um, they'll go out for bid as well, so. Um, Wally Road, Slash Pine, Elmer Thrift, and Banks Lane, they're completing design on those, they had to do some surveying on Wally. And soon as we get those, those, that engineer will send those out for bid once we set the plans, and buy what right of way we need to purchase. Um, have a question on a couple of buildings. The first building, I, I put in your, on your desk, this sheet here, and, um, this is the little white building on the corner of Allison and Ossie Davis. Car ran through it, it's been repaired, it, it served as ware visiting nurses, maybe served as EMS a long time ago, the, the last, um, it served was from, uh, for storage, it has, you know, very little parking. And so I wanted to see what the commissioner's desires to, um, maybe a, at another meeting, look at that building, get, all commissioners go look at that building and see maybe at next meeting if we wanna surplus that building out, and then, um, offer it for sale, and then also the front building that sits out here, that has just a little bit of storage in it. Um, if we wanna look at maybe, uh, that building and surplusing that building out, um, and, uh, selling that building and then taking the, uh, the rear building that's closest to us there, and insulating that and putting heat and air so we have climate-controlled storage in that building. Um, and the other item I have is behind Judge Gibson's office and over the next two hour parking lot, our offsite parking lot on Church Street, there's a twenty-foot alley that runs between, um, our, our, our parking lot and Judge Gibson's buildings, and, um, I was gonna ask if the commission's seen any use for that, if we don't see any use, they're gonna ba- uh, Judge Gibson's gonna have that alley abandoned, and if we don't see any use for it, then we can just not accept our ten feet that would normally go with us, 'cause I don't see where we need it, the, the asphalt goes up to the line, and, uh, and it has, I believe it has curving on that end, I'm not real sure, but, um, it was served no purpose for us to keep that ten feet, you know, we could, uh, uh, not accept that ten feet and, and, and that, that additional probably can put on tax rolls, I mean, little it is, but we can put it on tax rolls. If that's okay with the commission?
I'll just follow that.
Mr. Chairman, you just need a consent on that? Go ahead with it.
I mean, we technically haven't, technically, it's gotta go through the process by the city to be closed, and then, you know, they would deed it to, um, the adjoining landowners, so it's really kind of a preemptive vote, but I think we should probably, um, at least give, uh, consent to the county manager so that then he can communicate to the city that if they were to propose a deed to us, that you all would not be interested in accepting that property.
Okay.
Yep. I'm good with that.
Are y'all okay with that?
Yes. Yeah, you mentioned about the little building on Alice, how long has it been since someone, anyone's occupied it yet?
I'm not sure, it was, it was last used just for storage by ware visiting nurses, I believe.
The one that was medical storage, I just looked that up today, and they terminated their lease January of twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So. But we'll put that, I mean, if, if the commissioners wanna look, we can get with Billy O'Bryant, and then, uh, on our next meeting, we can have it listed to actually have, take official vote to surplus it. And then also, if you wanna look at the other buildings, um, when we're speaking of, get with Billy and look at those as well, and then we can have those on the next meeting to, uh, surplus, I just gotta check the zoning and see where the lines have to be laid out, because we'll have to get that one surveyed to split the two.
Okay. Everybody go look at it, make a mind up about it, about, all right, now, you need a consent to go ahead with those first phase of those short streets that you have approved, is that what you said?
No, sir, that, that's all part of his contract, when you, uh, approve the contract.
But you need to go ahead and bid them out.
Yeah, that was part of his contract for him to bid those as well, so we'll look over that document, and then, um, um, I'll tell them to go ahead and get them bid, and then, then we'll bring back the bids to you for, uh, the commission to, uh, accept the, the lowest and best bid.
You just need to go ahead then from us to tell you go ahead with it.
Yes, sir.
Y'all okay with that?
Yes.
On those first, uh, little short streets, they all designed now.
Yes, sir.
You can go ahead with them. All right, what else was it now you had?
Uh, the other ones, the other ones are, are, are being.
Already.
Yes, sir, we've got some that's not complete, but the other ones that were complete, we've actually gave them notice, the, uh, engineer notice to, uh,
Go ahead.
Secure the necessary documents for the contract, and then, um, we'll, um, probably bring the, I guess we'll bring the contract back once it's, everything's signed.
Okay.
And then the, uh, company will get, then we'll, I guess, give the company a notice to proceed.
Is that all? All right. We have any? Commissioner, that all you got, from the manager, is that all you got?
That's all I have, and just, but one other thing is keep, uh, Trooper.
Justin Jones.
Justin Jones in your prayers, you know, he was in accident, um, assisting the city, um, last week. He, I, I believe he's out of the hospital now, but just, he's got, he's gonna have recovery time, you know, um, and, you know, hats off to the city, I believe it was city police officers that went in the water and actually got him loose from the car, he was actually, the trooper's car was upside down in the creek, all you could see was the wheels, and the SUV that they were chasing was on top of the trooper's car. And the offender tried to jump out, my understanding, tried to jump out and snatch a bystander, bystander's car.
Yeah, he did.
So.
He found out what for to, he found out what for.
Right.
Okay, any more, you got anything else, that's all?
That's all I have.
All right, we got any commission comment?
I got several, so if somebody wants to go.
Yeah, let me, yes.
Hey, go ahead, then I'll go after you, then you can, you can close that.
John, you got something?
Yes, well, yeah, yes, sir, so, you know, I have been remiss to remind everybody or to tell everybody about this since I got on the commission, and that is that we have a wonderful, uh, community service place downtown Waycross, and it serves eight counties or nine counties that actually touch Ware County, including Baker County, Florida. Um, but it is, it's DC Downtown Food Ministry, and it's, it's, uh, it's a place where anybody can go in and get food, it's not cooked food, it's, uh, it's, it's like grocery store food, you go in there, you can, um, you can, basically, you shop, you go in there and get whatever you want, get you a bag or two of, of groceries, um, they, they do ask for a donation to be able to get two bags of groceries, but if you don't have money for a donation, you don't have to give one, they'll have bags ready for you, you can get it. Um, there are, I mean, they, they probably serve four hundred families every week, uh, between on the Tuesday from four to six and, uh, Thursday from six to eight, every, every week, and, um, it's, it's right there at two oh one Jenkins Street, uh, where the, uh, the, I think it's the Pogo Water Tower, and at the base of it is that memorial park that, you know, for the, um, I think it's the Vietnam Memorial Park.
Right.
Uh, right across the street from it, it's been going on for, I think they've had it there for almost ten years now, maybe a little bit less. But, um, anyways, um, just a great place, if you've, if you've never been to it, um, it's a great place. During the, the hurricane, uh, they had volunteers, and it's all volunteer-driven, they had volunteers out there giving out, um, giving out food, giving out water, giving out supplies as much as they would get in, as a matter of fact, the fire department used them to, to, you know, distribute supplies that, that they had an abundance of, just like, hey, just under the supply depot. Um, we even had during that same timeframe, um, the, uh, Israeli consulate general come in, uh, she's stationed in Atlanta. She came in and, um, and presented a truckload of supplies for them to, to distribute. And so anyways, they're just a community-driven, uh, ministry, and, uh, got them right here in Waycross, and they do an amazing job, they literally serve eight counties in Georgia, and then number nine is in, uh, Florida. But every county that touches Ware County and, and even beyond, I mean, they even go into Wayne County and, and stuff, and distributing food, but, um, food is a vital resource. I mean, next to water is, is, is water and air, then, you know, actually air, then water, then food is, is the things that we need the most, and, um, you know, uh, I think y'all know the statistics, Ware County is, is, is basically a, um, uh,
Poverty-stricken.
We're a poverty-stricken county, uh, based on the statistics and the numbers and everything, so food is obviously a, um, a, a, a big need in our community, and, um, we also have a, a large homeless community here too, and so
Right.
they're able to come in and, and get food, and we've actually got some people that are, that are homeless, that are there every week, they volunteer, they, you know, they're, they're, they wanna work for what they get, and so they, they volunteer and they work, um, there at the, at the Food Ministry and hand out food and, and clean up and do all the kind of stuff, so if you've never had an opportunity to go by there and see it, I encourage you to do it. Um, and, and also send people by there to, um, you know, check things out.
Okay, I appreciate that, John, and, you know, I think about what Jesus said, that, you know, the harvest is great.
That's right.
Labor's a few, and we got a lot of needs in our community, and sometime all you gotta do is just open your eyes up, you'll find something you can do to help someone.
That's right, when you do to the least of these.
That's right. And also, I'd just like to, uh, again, commend the two gentlemen here, Mr. Carv and Mr. Mike Paul. Mikey, Mr. Mikey, and also, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Wright, for this venture that you are about to go on. And one thing I like about, this is what's good about public hearings, and people coming out, and I applaud you for bringing up what you did, because you made a valid point there about the interest into there, and you know, it's something I hadn't really thought about, but I knew that it was gonna be a cultural site there, but you know, it's just a matter of switching it around, which can, you know, work for the good. So it's a win-win for everyone, you know, you're not against what they're wanting to do, you just wanna see if they could maybe accommodate in that area, and I think they have to look at it in order to, they are both reasonable people, you know, and, uh, so I applaud you all and wish you the best in your effort on this. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If you need a good fence, man, you can see him.
Well, I don't, I don't.
I don't know, we might need to stick the pepper on the fence.
Yeah, yeah.
Houses.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Lucas?
I do have a couple of things, I've been called by several people in my community, my area, uh, Mr. Mike Smith, he is desperately asking for a dead-end sign. A lot, a lot of peoples, when, when trained, you know how we got the little bridge now over there, well, if you go east, uh, actually south, if you go south at the end of Wind Clay, that's a dead-end road, if you go south on it. So what a lot of people were doing, they're either coming across the bridge, and then they're shooting down Wind Clay, thinking they're gonna get out and come up, you know, out of Frontier Estates, and they run into a dead-end, and he's requesting to put a sign there because you're getting down traffic and back traffic.
Okay, we'll put that on that.
Traffic.
Yes, you need to put that on that there.
All right, uh, there's also a major, over at Deanwood Baptist Church, right when you first pull into the, the main drive there, it's like, you gotta drive on this side, you gotta drive on that side, and then you got pretty close to the steps right there, the, the road's actually falling in, and it's on, it's on the roadside of the pipe under the road.
At Deanwood?
At Deanwood Baptist Church, yes, sir, and it's on, it's on the roadside, but it's actually caving in, and it's actually got bigger over the last six months.
Okay.
And. Sir, yes, sir, I got a couple, uh, Mr. Al Blanchard called me, and he was questioning me about the mobile, mobile home park out there in Emerson Park that was going up. Um, he said that that is actually, a lot of people call that a canal out there that runs behind it, but it's not, it's actually a ditch uh, on Smith Road to Kettle Creek, and he don't see anywhere where it actually makes it all the way to Kettle Creek. And he's looked at the area photos and everything else, and I can't find it either, but he also said that you go down Slash Pine, he, he suggested a six-foot chain link fence across there on the backside of that to keep people from coming in there with the four-wheelers and all that kind of stuff.
That ditch does go all the way to Kettle Creek.
Does it? Go all the way through?
Goes right through by.
And then he asked, he said, asked me if I, yes, sir, and then he asked me if I knew if that was a thirty-foot right of way or if it was gonna be a sixty-foot right of way where they're gonna put in that new, he thought double wide going in there, I told him I hadn't heard nothing about double wides.
What, what's your trailer park, I don't know what trailer.
The one out there.
The one out there in Emerson Park.
Uh, Emerson Park.
The one that they're getting designed?
Aldridge.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not a trailer park, it's a subdivision.
Well, they changed that thing.
And, uh, they'll have a one-lot area for green space, um, and the roads will be dedicated to the county, they're gonna extend water out into that subdivision.
I mean, is it gonna be built houses, or is it gonna be?
Similar to, uh, Charlotte State's, uh, White House.
What about like Lowden Scotts, kinda similar to that kinda, sorta?
That's who's building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Logan is?
Logan Holmes, yeah.
Okay, I ain't got no problem with it, dude. Y'all told me that, I wouldn't even have mentioned it. And the last one, uh Matt, Mr. Matt talked about everything that he was gonna talk about, but Michael Jacobs called me again on Tory Circle. I did let him know that that was being designed. And he said that we went down there and cut it twice, the canal that's right, separates him and his neighbor. And you got a, a guy up the hill, you got him on this side, you got Wes on this side. But we went down there and cut it twice, but they left all the debris and they only cut it about that load. And his little old snapper lawnmower ain't gonna go down in that ditch and cut them big old things as big around as your, your wrist. And he said if they would cut it and clean the debris out, he would keep it mowed. That's what he said.
Let me look at the plans for Tory Circle, I think that was one of the short roads that was just, just designed. And that's advantage off Tory Circles. And those plans uh should reflect that drainage, so let's see what they, what they call for there. Because they probably call it cleaning all that out is the foundation. And then get their little, put asphalt on that.
Okay, is that all?
Yes, sir.
Alright, how about that uh road? It's called Roscoe Mixon Road. And we approved to move that road over. That we have all the deeds and everything that we supposed to be complete that, so we can complete that road.
There's two issues with that.
Huh?
There's two issues. They never provide.
That's what they, what the warranty deed. Um, and Ms. Jennifer can uh elaborate on that a little bit more. But then also the commission never voted to uh for the county to do that work, from my understanding.
We agreed to it.
I, I thought they did.
Didn't we, Bert? We agreed to that way back in when Jerry Pope and Steve Barnes were on it.
I think what it was, we said it. You talking about that, the, at the church, right?
Right, all the written documentation that we have, I never saw where it was heard in the minutes in the uh, in the commission meeting. I may have missed them, but I looked.
It was always during.
But the, the um written documentation that we have was that um the church was paying for the moving of the road. And then we needed a warranty deeds, which Ms. Jennifer wrote them a uh letter outlining five, six, seven things in that.
Mr. Chairman, my, my recollection, and I did ask um the county manager to go back and pull the minutes because of course that's all that we can rely on as far as um, you know, staff as to what authority was given. But we did have a situation about a year prior to this request being made. And this request has been made a number of years ago now, I'd expect two or three years ago. But prior to the church's request, we had a, a private property owner who came in and requested, you know, a certain road um be realigned. And so at that time, we came up with a process where um that landowner would uh buy warranty deed, right? Would warrant um the, the uh, uh title to the property that he was giving. And that uh they did take on all the cost of the work and actually um accomplished the work. And then we went through the process as the county to quit claim, um have a road closure for the portion of the road that was being closed. Quit claim that to the property owner and then they warranty deeded the other section that they had built the road on. And that is how that process went. So the last time this was discussed with the church, um the guidance from the commission, my recollection was, okay, let's do for the church what we did for this previous property owner. And so I basically gave the church the same checklist that we had already given um the previous property owner. And Mr. Schubert's right that, you know, there were a couple of things on that checklist. We did receive quit claim deeds from the church, but we have not received a warranty deed. And then also it was my understanding that uh they were not willing to uh take on the cost of the project. So I think it just kinda stalled because that was the direction we've been given.
Okay.
So that, that's the update as far as we know it. You know, if, if, if the commission desires for something else to occur, it's not that, you know, staff is unwilling to discuss that, but based on the authority that we were given from the board at that time, um the, the church has not met the conditions that, you know, we were advised needed to be met.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, that's my, best, my recollection, that's what happened was that they were supposed to deed us property for that street that we were, that we're closing or abandoning. And then they were supposed to construct, I guess, the road, but they were supposed to do it up to, like county, Spanish or whatever. And then uh then we would take over, maintain it after that time.
And then they were gonna file an, also an application to um close the portion of the road that they desired to be closed.
Is this the one out in Wesboro?
Yeah. Do, does the church own the road, the, the new place where they want to build a new road or does?
No.
No.
The church still owns the road that goes through there. But they agreed to give that back to the.
County.
To the county. For uh the county agreed to give that up and take the road over behind it. And they said that they would harrow up the right away. They stayed, they surveyed it, they done got, they done done all the surveying on it, it stayed down. The pipe's already in there. And all they, all they agreed to do was to harrow it up. And the county, we asked Michael and them when they go out there and grade it up. And if Michael's here, he'll tell you that we agreed, the county and the commission agreed to let Michael go out there and pull the road bed up.
I, I, I remember that from just being in the meeting.
And, and we were in the meeting and they agreed to it. And the commission agreed to it.
I think they might have done a little bit of work out there um on some of it.
Yeah, they.
They done some site prep work out there, but then they quit, just stopped.
No, they, we, we hadn't done anything on it was except surveying it and.
Might have put a pipe in.
They had the pipe in there, but the old road's still going right up next to the church house. And they wanted to move it from there over so that, so the road, road wouldn't be right by the church when they have a church.
I, I think everybody's agreeable to it happening. Um, and I, I think they do, they had a lawyer's office that contacted us at one point, the church did. So, you know, we've got, we've got the game plan if, if, and, and I, you know, I apologize if the minutes don't reflect what, what it was, you know, done, but, but my recollection was not that the county was doing the work. So if that was the agreement, that's fine, we just need, we need approval from the commission. And I, and I will say this, one thing I spoke to Mr. Schubert about was this may be a little bit of a different situation than what we had with the private landowner because um with the private landowner, that was, you know, preference is what I would call it. This could arguably be a safety issue, right, with where the lo, the road is located? And so um if the county wanted to, you know, choose to move the road itself rather than a request by a private party, um you know, then the county could bring the uh, the road closure. The county could choose to build the road based on, you know, safety concerns as far as where the road's located, being close to the church.
And, and like I say, again, I've just been awhile, but mine's regulation is that if they would deed the street over to us, I mean, the uh street with abandon, get the warranty deed, then they build a thing, build a road, then we would maintain the road. That was my understanding. Now, you know, it's, it's been a little while and uh, because wasn't it something, wasn't it all predicated on they were gonna add on to the church or something like that?
Yeah.
And that's, that the rationale or the reasoning behind wanting to move the road.
That, that was also my recollection, Commissioner.
And mine too.
And they were gonna give up there right away over there and Mr. Rouse gave more right away to the county than they were getting back for that.
I believe that the plaque showed forty-five feet, they gave up thirty and then another fifteen, I believe is what it was.
Yeah.
For that. I, whatever the board tells me to do, we'll get it done.
They'll pay for it.
Well, let's get the deeds to it. I mean, if they, if they deed that part back.
Right. And again, they gave the county quit claim deeds, right? But to build a road, you know, we, the county should require a warranty deed because then their warranting title, you know, the quit claim deed is only, if, if I have any claim, I mean, I could do a quit claim deed on, you know, any property that I don't own and just say any right I have to that property, I'm quitting any claim I have to it. So, you know, generally for road projects, we certainly require um a warranty deed to warrant title to that property.
Okay, well, well, who, who do we need? Do we need to go back to the lawyer and let him do the uh quit claim?
Well, my underst, I've already spoke, I mean, I, the, they're clear that warranty deed is what's required. I think there's just some holdup with the church about and or maybe um.
Mr. Rouse, now he's passed. So he passed the one. Now his son's there.
Well, and that may be where the holdup is, I'm not sure. But that, it's been communicated to them, certainly, you know, you're welcome to communicate also, but that, that's been well communicated as far as that issue.
Now, my, Chairman, my, my thing is, is it Mike, Michael that owns it now or is it Stacy that owns it now?
No, it's uh Wayne.
Wayne Rouse.
Wayne Rouse, Tommy's son, probably, I should know.
Cause I know Mike owns a bunch of that land out there. Cause he's a Rouse too. His daddy owns it. And Wayne's daddy brothers have.
This is Tommy. Uh, Tommy and Wayne. Yeah, okay.
You said?
Well, I know the road goes through Roscoe Mixon Road, it goes through, went through his, through Basiloe Church. He wanted to just give it them and then put the road over at the back.
Has any more thought? Any more thought been done about McDonald Road?
What about McDonald Road?
Repaving it, they said they're gonna surface it?
It's um, it's, it's on that, it's actually being bitted out. It's been bid, they're waiting on the contracts to do it.
Well, they gotta wait about ninety days because they ain't gonna be able to make it down there for ninety days. Cause they loading up about a million and a half pounds a day of blueberries.
James, I got one thing, um we mentioned, uh Astori Road, uh will you check on the striping on it? They hadn't striped it yet.
I will.
And the signs.
Forgot about it when you mentioned that Astori Road, I brought, brought it to my attention.
I'm sorry, Mr..
No, go ahead, man.
And the signs, uh, Mr. County Manager, over in Emerson Park, there, there's road department sign are up. There's road signs, I've, I've drove around this county, I've drove in other people's districts and looked. And I, I quit counting, there's so many signs down.
Chairman, I discussed that today.
We've been discussing that.
We discussed the possibility with the use of that building over there. If um we keep it is to actually move the sign shop into that building, have the uh sign cutter and then hire somebody to put up signs and build signs and put signs up if we can find somewhere in the budget, the commission will approve it.
Well, I believe, I believe we would all approve that because.
Cause um.
There's a bunch of road signs laying out.
And right, right now, right up the dead end of Tebow, when you come to the two-way and you cross across, that stop sign's laying at a forty-five degree angle.
Right.
There's some on shot up.
It's a full-time job to keep those signs up.
They, they take them as, if, if they have a name on them, they'll take them as soon as you put them up. They'll go and, and push them off and take the alley boat out and, or take the top of them off. And if we put them in concrete, they'll take the cars and bend over, push them over and break them and.
Electrify.
Oh, yeah.
I ain't got that.
Okay.
Never took a sign where it counted.
I'm gonna put one on my road going in there, two miles on that other road. I'm gonna say anybody that threw that in a beer can and all those beer wrappers, he's still sleeping with his mama. He needs to grow up.
Something wrong with you. Something wrong with you. He's hungry.
Well, it must be, why, I never did throw mine out, I always throw it up in the back the way I got home, so I'm attracted.
I'm gonna be like this. Driving with his knee.
Alright, fellas, y'all about ready?
Everybody. Everybody else got their comment?
Clarify Roscoe Mixon so we, we, so we leave here today with a, with a clear direction and we can get it either.
You talking about the church out there?
Roscoe Mixon, right.
I think, I think Turner said.
No, man, you good.
Let's get a deed. There's some, man, first thing we gonna get a warranty deed on it.
Okay.
Let's get that thing, we're gonna change it over.
And then as far as building that road now, that's where I'm trying to see about what on that because right now, if we don't just go out, just build a road on private property, right?
Well, we have, it'd have to be.
Well, it'd be deeded to us, so we build it.
But I'm saying, will we go out and build that road though?
And historically, we have um tried to help churches when we could. For example, we've paved a lot of roads, just paved them up to the church.
Right.
Um, so, you know, it's kinda whatever direction the commission, if the commission says if we get the warranty deeds, they get recorded for us to go build it, I'll tell them to go build it. It won't take but a few days to build the road.
Uh, they build that in uh probably two hours. It's just a little.
It didn't take long.
Couple passes. It's right through a little pasture.
Might even pay.
Yeah, it, it ain't no.
I think there's one.
And he said he'd harrow up the grass and all the fork and, and what you're doing is just changing the roadway from the church house.
I'm finding that.
I'm making a motion that we.
And it's for the church, it ain't for the individual, right?
Yeah.
Jose.
I'm making a motion that we end the work session.
Okay.
I'm second that. I mean, a regular meeting, we've been there a long time, we don't forget.
We made, I hear a motion that we adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.